Good morning, everyone. Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting of TRPA's Advisory Planning Commission to order. Today is Wednesday, February fourteenth. Happy Valentine's Day, 2024. And it's nine thirty-five. The first item on our agenda is the roll call. So Tracy, over to you.
Mr. Olling? Ms. Carr?
Here.
Ms. Chandler?
Present.
Mr. Drake?
Here.
Mr. Drew said he would join us in twenty minutes or so. Mr. Ferry?
Here.
Ms. Ferris?
Here.
Mr. Hill? Ms. Wyder?
Here.
Mr. Letton? Ms. Marolis O'Neil?
Oh, Ben Letton is here, sorry.
Thank you, sir Ben. Ms. Marolis O'Neil? Mr. Hitchcock?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Stoller?
Here.
Chief Lindgren?
Here.
Mr. TeShara?
Morning.
Mr. Smokey? And Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Tracy. Do you want to just say here, Mr. Drew arrived?
I'm here, present.
Good? All right, great, thank you all, thank you for being here. Uh, let me go over the remote meeting rules for the day. Everyone's probably pretty familiar with these by now, but let me say them again. You want? Thank you. So to observe the meeting, go to trpa.gov, under the calendar header, click on APC Meeting, Hybrid Meeting for today. There you'll find a link to the public webinar. To address APC members directly with your comments, raise your hand in Zoom by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen at the appropriate agenda item. With your hand raised, you'll be unmuted by TRPA staff and have three minutes to address the APC. If you have used the dial-in numbers to join us by telephone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and you'll be unmuted. To my fellow APC members, if you wish to speak, you can also raise your hand in Zoom and you'll find the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Remote APC members may not use the chat box to make any comments or to have sidebar conversations. Please, everyone, remember to mute your microphone unless you'd like us to hear what you're saying. And I'd like to ask you also to turn on your cameras if you are able, we'd love to see you. Okay, thank you for that. And I'm going to take us to item two, which is approval of the agenda. Staff, any changes?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. And John, uh, would you like to clarify, we did get a public comment from Mr. Flaherty about our agenda posting and perhaps his thought that we left out some information, so maybe you could just address that quickly?
Sure, Mr. Flaherty, um, has complained that the notice for the notice of preparation is adequate, is inadequate, I've looked at it and looked at his, um, complaints and we're fine, it's a, it's simply a notice, an opportunity to comment, it is, there's no action being taken.
Very good, thank you for that clarification. I will go ahead and deem the agenda approved as it was posted then for the record. And I'm going to take us to item three, which is public interest comments. If any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission, please either come to the podium if you're here in person or raise your hand now by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. Please remember, all public comments should be brief and concise. Um, again, you will have three minutes to comment, you will not be given extra time. Written comments received by four PM yesterday were forwarded to APC members before the meeting and we have reviewed those. Late comments may be distributed and posted after the meeting. Any unheard comments can be submitted via email to publiccomment@trpa.gov. Please include the meeting information and agenda item in the subject line of your email. Also, please note APCs prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussion, discussing issues raised by the public, not listed on our agenda. So let's go to the room first and I'll go to you, Ms. Waller.
Uh, good morning, Ellie Waller. Um, I think at some point we need to step back and analyze a little better the existing conditions and course correct, or I think we're doomed to repeat some of the mistakes we did in the past, uh, like really not getting a community enhancement program on the ground. Um, with that said, I don't believe all the projects look at the cumulative impacts or the, uh, existing conditions of an area, not just the project site. And I'm hopeful that, uh, when evaluating the projects, that you are looking at the thresholds, uh, in a little more depth than usual to see the directions where they started, if they're flat right now, and, and how do these newer projects come forward and actually achieve, um, some of the issues, uh, like the no net zero, thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Other commenters in the room? Seeing none, let's go online.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have one hand raised online so far, uh, Yolanda Knack, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, my name's Yolanda Knack, I'm an Incline Village resident. Um, I am, uh, sorry, my talk's barking, let me go back in the house, but, uh, I am concerned about the, um, have it written down, actually. Uh, first of all, the whole, uh, parking issue. Um, this is under six B Affordable Housing Mixed Use and Design Standards. Um, let, not
Excuse me, let me, let me stop you quickly, this is just for open forum public comment, if you want to comment on a specific agenda item, we can do that at the item.
Well, um, this is just a general comment.
Okay.
First of all, um, the first mistake you made was last year when you changed the zoning on nine forty-seven Tahoe Boulevard, uh, that was zoned for apartments, um, affordable housing, uh, for people that work here, that would be apartments. Um, they're not going to be able to come up with the twenty percent of, um, what's needed to buy a condo or, uh, a house, so that this whole program is completely ridiculous. Um, and thinking that you have parking on the street, not requiring as much parking, um, like I'm looking at my street right now and there's a foot and a half of snow and ice along the side of the road, uh, even though today's a green day, uh, you wouldn't be able to park on the side of the road. And so this whole idea that you're going to provide affordable housing in, in that they're gonna, that people are going to have to come up with twenty percent to buy a condo, um, is unrealistic. Uh, apartments is what is going to be, um, realistic for people that, um, that work here. Uh, the other issue that you're not taking into consideration is evacuation. Um, the evacuation plans are inadequate, they do not include visitors, we have thousands of visitors every day, so, uh, you should never move forward on some project like this, uh, with the idea that, uh, people are going to be able to park, uh, with the idea that, um, people are going to be able to buy these condos and, um, with the idea that people are going to evacuate, I don't know if you know, but Incline Village was compared to Lahaina after the Lahaina Fire and the other, uh, um, uh, 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 excuse me, um, Kings Beach was compared to Paradise after the Paradise Fire. So, um, the people that live here, you need to first be, you know, be able to provide safe evacuation for them, uh, before you go, uh, working on new developments, thank you very much, bye.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we had one more hand go up, uh, Doug Flaherty, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you, members of the commission, Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleaner.org. Always amazed at how the chairs of these various committees are quick to move in and attempt to silence speakers and, you know, degrade their First Amendment rights, you need to be a little more tolerant before you make judgmental opinions about what a general comment is or isn't. Secondly, um, APC members, uh, in the past have basically been, um, useful lapdogs for the TRPA staff and, um, I just hope that based on everything that you know that's happening politically and otherwise here in the basin, that you start to ask some reasonable hard questions about what the staff is feeding you. Because you really are providing and historically have not provided leadership to protect the Lake Tahoe Basin and the clarity of the lake. In addition, with regards to the fire evacuation issue, you, you, the committee, various committees, the governing board, completely fear a data-driven roadway evacuation capacity analysis, because you know that once that analysis is published based on pure data, you will not be able to continue to saturate and degrade the Lake Tahoe Basin per your public interest partners. Those partners include public agency partnerships, pet nonprofits, and the development industries. Um, finally, you're all a product of regulatory capture, there was a news article on that recently. This is what happens is you've created this system, this repetitive system of self-preservation on the part of the TRPA over since the 2012 Regional Plan, and now it's all about protecting your interests, digging your heels in, coming up with whatever, you know, idea of the day that you're trying to promote, and you'll take everything right into eventually a lawsuit regardless of what the public produces as far as data. So I'm ashamed of, of the history of the Advisory Planning Commission and the TRPA since 2012. You guys need to ask some hard questions today, not just be spoon-fed by the staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Uh, Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment.
Thanks, Catherine. Okay, great. Let's move on to item four, disposition of minutes, we do have a draft set of minutes from our November eight, 2023 meeting, it's on page five of your packets. Any comments or questions on the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Garth?
Um, on page eight, it states Ms. Olling seconded the motion, um, my pronouns are he/him, that could be corrected, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Garth.
Mr. Chairman, Steve, I have some other items, uh, similar, uh, name misspellings, missing words, things like that, nothing of a substantive nature. Rather than go through all of those, I'd like to be able to give them to Tracy subsequent to the meeting so she can make those corrections. So if there isn't any objection from my colleagues, I would move the minutes of November as amended, incorporating, uh, Mr. Olling's comment, and, uh, I will hand the changes off to Tracy after the meeting. Is that appropriate?
Is that satisfactory, John, or?
Um, well, we
I'm pulling a Shelley Aldean.
Well, usually Shelley always gets corrections to us beforehand, so we can look at them to see if they are
Right.
Um, you know, truly
I'm happy to go through them right now if you want.
Well, I know that's a, a pain, but, um, is there a way that, how, how many do you have?
Probably there's like eight or ten. I mean, like Peggy Boylan's name is not spelled correctly, Herman Fillmore's name is not spelled correctly, counsel is not spelled correctly, and I'm sure you're interested in that change, meaning legal counsel.
I'm not, I'm not
So those are, so those are
Destructionist.
Those are the times, those are the types of comments that I have, and I'm happy to go through them.
Why don't you just go through them very quickly?
Okay.
And then we can take the sheet and make the corrections.
Okay. Or, Mr. Chair. Oh. Mr. Chair, is there any chance that, uh, Mr. TeShara could hand these off and the review and we could, uh, vote on this next month? Instead of taking that additional time, whichever, I mean, that's an option, whatever you would, we can do that, no problem.
Okay, let's do that. So Steve, uh, why don't you submit your changes and we'll, uh, hold these minutes for now and we will vote on them next month.
Okay, maybe along with the December minutes.
Thank you, Steve, we could also just move it to later in the meeting.
Well, whatever, whatever is the pleasure of
How about if we're doing well on time and we're feeling energized at the end, we'll do it.
Whatever you say, so at the moment, I will withdraw the motion that I made so we can take one of the other courses of action.
Do you want to change your motion?
Yeah, I just want to withdraw the motion unless we, it's like I could move that we can table this to later.
We get comments from Steve usually beforehand and
No, I, I understand.
So it's not a comment on your
No.
Comments.
All right, so what are we doing, am I making another motion or?
We need another motion to postpone, right?
Uh, you don't need, I don't think you need a motion to postpone, we'll just continue the item until later in the meeting.
All right, great, thank you.
So I will continue item four, which is our disposition of minutes until our next meeting. Thank you for your thorough review, any other comments? I guess I didn't look online. Do not see any hands raised? Okay, good. So now on to the meat of our agenda, we have some public hearings, but first we have a little business to take care of. Uh, item five is an administrative matter and item five A is the election of Chair and Vice Chair for the next two years for the Advisory Planning Commission. Information can be found on page twenty-seven of your packet and I'm going to pass this to Mr. Hester for a quick intro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, as you may recall, at the December meeting, we announced that we would have elections at the January meeting, which was canceled, and, um, asked for interest from those on the commission. And, um, the interest that we got was, first of all, your chair volunteered to serve again if necessary and nobody else wanted to do it. Uh, Ms. Stoller volunteered to serve as Vice Chair if your current chair would continue on, and so, uh, that is the slate of officers that we know, we heard about as staff and, uh, it's now to the board or the commission to consider. Those or others, I, I obviously can't make a nomination, but that's the information gathered since the last meeting.
Thank you, John. So, um, would anyone else care to throw their hat in the ring? This is your time to shine. Steve?
I think, I think it is true that typically the chair and vice chair are from different states, so, um, so I think that the pairing that Mr. Hester announced, in my view, would be appropriate.
Good context. Also, um, I don't know, Vice Chair Carr, if you would like to say anything, but I know your job has escalated recently and, and you have expressed desire to step down as Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Brendan, yes, that is true, um, with the, uh, additional roles and responsibilities of my current job, um, I felt the APC could be better served by some, um, another representative as Vice Chair and, um, I'm happy to make a motion if that's where we're at.
We do need a motion.
All right, I, unless guided otherwise, um, I'll handle them both together, I move to elect APC Chair as Brendan Ferry for calendar years twenty-four and twenty-five and Ellery Stoller as Vice Chair of the APC for calendar years twenty-four and twenty-five.
Second. Thank you, Jennifer and Steve. Is that okay to do them together, John? It's okay, all right, uh, roll call vote, Tracy, please.
Ms. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Drake?
Aye.
Mr. Drew?
Yes, and thanks to you both.
Ms. Wyder?
Yes.
Mr. Lessin?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Olling?
Aye.
Ms. Marolis O'Neil? Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
Aye.
Chief Lindgren?
Yes.
Mr. TeShara?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye, and thank you.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you all for your, uh, continued support and welcome, Ms. Stoller, that's fantastic. Great, next time you'll be sitting right here. We'll get you a new nameplate, too. So, great, thank you all, now let's move on to item six, more planning matters. Item six A is a notice of preparation for a joint environmental impact report, environmental impact statement, or a proposed and possible Boatworks redevelopment project. This is located at seven forty, seven sixty, and seven ninety North Lake Boulevard in Tahoe City, which is in Placer County, California. Assessor parcel numbers nine, zero nine four, zero nine zero, zero zero one, zero zero three, excuse me, zero three three, zero three six, zero four two, and zero six five. This is TRPA file number ERSP twenty-two-two-zero-nine-five-three, you're really testing me here. Information can be found on this item on page thirty-five of your packet and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. McMahon with TRPA to present on this item.
Thank you, uh, Brendan, uh, my name is Brandy McMahon, I'm the local government coordinator with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Uh, we're here today because Placer County and, uh, the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency have issued a notice of preparation for the proposed Boatworks redevelopment project in Tahoe City, and we are planning on moving forward with the preparation of a joint environmental impact report and environmental impact statement, um, which is going to be prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and TRPA rules and regulations. Um, today, um, uh, here to, to present the proposed project as well as our plans for moving forward with the environmental review process, I have with me Heather Beckman, she's a senior planner from Placer County. Um, we also have Leah Chavez online, she's a principal planner with, uh, Placer County. And then we have the applicant's team, we have, um, in the audience here, we have Vinton Hawkins, he's with MJD Capital Partners, and Wyatt Ogilvy, he is a land use consultant from the Tahoe Basin. And then online, we have the property owner, uh, Marie Murphy, and then Chip Williamson, who is, um, an attorney that's part of the project team. And then in the audience taking, um, notes today, because this is a, considered a scoping meeting, um, we have Nanette Hansel and Jessica Mitchell, they're with Ascent Environmental, which is the environmental firm that has been hired to prepare the joint environmental document. Um, actually, let's go to the next slide. Thank you, so the purpose of a scoping meeting is to obtain public and agency input regarding the potentially significant environmental, uh, environmental issues to discuss reasonable project alternatives and potential mitigation measures that, um, will be evaluated in the joint environmental document. Uh, today, we will highlight, uh, the potential impacts we are planning to analyze in the joint environmental document. Um, any comments we receive verbally today or in writing throughout the scoping process, we will take into consideration, and then later on in the process, there will be additional public hearings where we discuss the merits of the project. Uh, next slide. So in addition to today's scoping meeting, um, we're having another scoping, um, meeting in Tahoe City on February twenty-sixth, it's going to be a hybrid meeting, so people can participate in person or remotely, and then we've also placed the notice of preparation on the governing board agenda for February twenty-eighth. Um, scoping is occurring, uh, J, um, we released the notice of preparation on January thirty-first, so we are taking written public comment through February twenty-ninth, which is the end of the scoping period, next slide, please. Um, so we did send the notice of preparation to property owners within three hundred feet of the project boundary, uh, we're maintaining a distribution list for anyone who's interested in being notified of upcoming public hearings, we provided the notice of preparation to state and federal agencies, um, tribes, county departments, and public agencies such as school districts, and we provided a notice in the newspaper, or in two newspapers, okay, next slide. So I'm going to now turn the presentation over to the applicant's team, they've put a lot of effort into preparing the proposed, uh, project, and we're going to start with Marie Murphy, the property owner, she's available online, so if you could make her a presenter, um, that would be great.
I'm here, thank you, Brandy, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, uh, I'm Marie Murphy and I'm the owner and manager of Boatworks at Tahoe LLC, the subject of our discussion today. My operating company, MJD, acquired the inn at Boatworks, formerly known as the Tahoe City Inn in twenty-eighteen, and the following year, we purchased the Boatworks Mall. Boatworks for decades has been the hub of the North Shore. Through the combined ownership of the inn, mall, and office space at Boatworks, our team has revitalized these aging structures, drawing people back to this very central location in Tahoe City. We've invested over a million dollars in renovating the inn and has, have successfully leased thirty percent more of the space in the mall than the previous owners. We take pride in the sense of place we've fostered for the Lake Tahoe community through our investments and our community-oriented events. We've introduced the first mural to Tahoe City, collaborated with nonprofits and small businesses to provide space for art, health and fitness, wine, commerce, retail, and most importantly, the environmental stewardship of our cherished Lake Tahoe. My partner, Vinton, is in person today, I'm sorry I'm not there, I, uh, at an event for my daughter, but, uh, Vinton and I are deeply rooted in the local community while we also have an institutional mindset, which is essential for navigating the entitlements that we're here to discuss today. Vinton, a lifelong Lake Tahoe resident, has a longstanding familial tie to the area dating back nearly a century. Vinton and his wife Carrie reside here in the basin. As for myself, I'm a mountain enthusiast at heart, hailing from Oregon and Utah. Since arriving in California in nineteen ninety-seven, my journey has led me to this remarkable, remarkable property on the North Shore of Lake Tahoe. I purchased the inn with the intention of providing my daughters with significant time and exposure to the wonders of the Lake Tahoe Basin. My daughters and I share a profound love for the mountain environment, the great outdoors, and of course, Lake Tahoe. Over the past four and a half years, Vinton and I have diligently prepared for today's discussion, we've consulted both with the Placer County and the TRPA to understand and align with the goals and objectives outlined in the twenty-seventeen Area Regional Plan for our site. We look forward to hearing all stakeholder feedback on our proposal. Our development proposal meets the following three goals of the Area Regional Plan, restoring the environment, enhancing community character, and improving socioeconomic conditions. We meet these goals by enhancing the SEZ, bringing more environmentally friendly buildings and transportation options to the site, and aligning our operations with best-in-class, environmentally forward operators. We have carefully planned the visual aspects of our project to hearken back to the mountain architecture that both Boatworks and our community are built on. Together with our architects, we have thoughtfully designed structures to create a sense of place in Tahoe City that feels natural to our community. that feels natural to our community. As a catalyst redevelopment, we will create new jobs and lift overall the overall North Shore socioeconomic conditions. As the saying goes, rising tides lift all boats. We've conducted thorough due diligence on land capability and zoning, accumulating a wealth of studies and information necessary to guide our project through entitlements and into the operational phase. This next iteration of Boatworks and our very special site will bring change, but we firmly believe that the benefits of the transformative redevelopment will elevate a dormant vacant town to its highest potential benefiting the environment, the lake, and both local residents and visitors alike.
Thanks, Marie. Are we going to you next, Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Marie. Hello, everyone. I'm Vinton Hawkins. I'm the general counsel for MJD Capital Partners, co-owner of the Boatworks with my amazing partner, Marie Murphy, and project manager of the Boatworks Redevelopment. As Marie mentioned, my great-grandfather bought properties in the basin in nineteen twenty-four. We are celebrating a hundred years of ownership this year, and I've spent my entire life connected to this amazing wonder. Like all of you, I love and desire to protect Lake Tahoe, and to do so, it takes vision and money. Our proposed redevelopment project will not only enhance the existing environmental and community conditions, but will provide economic benefits to continued efforts to preserve the lake. We are proposing a destination hotel for the redevelopment of the Boatworks, where once guests arrive, they can access alternative modes of transportation, walk or bike the town, and reduce traveling in and out of the basin because they can find a hotel. Tahoe is a tourist-based economy, yet Placer County portion of the Tahoe Basin has a limited supply of hotel rooms, zero point two percent pursuant to the Tahoe Basin area plan. According to Placer County records, there are approximately seventeen hundred hotel motel rooms in the Tahoe Basin portion of the county, and there has not been a new hotel project of scale in sixty years. We get fifteen million visitors every year. Stakeholders and agencies have spent the last twenty-five years studying where and how tourist accommodation should and could occur as documented in the twenty twelve Tahoe City Visioning Options, the twenty seventeen Tahoe Basin Area Plan, and the twenty twenty Placer County Tahoe Basin Town Center Economic Sustainability Needs Analysis. After extensive due diligence and site assessment, we agree with these reports and plans that the Boatworks is the ideal location for a hotel redevelopment as it fulfills the mission and the vision of those documents. Next slide, please. The NOP has a section on our project objectives, so I'll be brief. I want to highlight the importance of revitalizing the Tahoe City Town Center for overall community development. Very little has occurred here in decades. The project will address aspects such as new infrastructure, environmental enhancement, and economic growth. The project will offer modern, comfortable, and sustainable accommodations for tourists. It will incorporate energy-efficient designs and amenities to attract environmentally conscious travelers. LED-certified construction, fire-resistant building material, and site-wide modernization of fire suppression systems, site-wide modernization of HVAC, snow removal, snow melt, and waste management systems, and implementation of water conservation measures. The project will reduce the overall existing footprint and reduce some of the existing encroachment into the Bliss Creek SEZ. In addition to reduction of total existing onsite coverage, there will be further reduction anticipated with the use of pervious surfaces. The reduction of over one acre of single-use parking and the removal of the outdated runoff recapture systems and will incorporate site-wide modernization of all runoff stormwater recapture and infiltration systems, water conservation for landscaping, and pollution prevention measures to enhance water quality in the area. Examples of the redevelopment project effect on local businesses and residents are job creation, increased tourism revenue, and enhanced property values that hopefully encourages Tahoe City property owners to fix up their properties. Public and private transportation is built into the programming and will prove improve the site's current transportation infrastructure to better connect the town center with surrounding areas. Examples are pedestrian-friendly streetscape, the lakeside trails on the property for biking, walking, and wayfinding opportunities, skiing and sightseeing shuttle service, and boating opportunities that are immediately adjacent to the site. Bike lockers for employees and condo owners, employee showers, EV charging stations are proposed. We want people out of their cars as much as you do. Next slide, please. The project location sits in the heart of Tahoe City's mixed-use town center core and is completely surrounded by light zoning. There is no residential interface. Placer County offices, US Bank, and State Route twenty-eight are to the north, Safeway to the east. Bliss Creek runs between the Boatworks and Safeway, the Roundhouse Mall and Tahoe City Marina, the largest marina on the lake, to the west and south. And then the lakeside trail runs along the lake shore. Next slide, please. The site is just under three point eight acres and has three structures on it. The Boatworks Mall is on the waterfront with forty-two thousand one hundred and thirteen square feet of retail, office, services, and restaurants. The Boatworks Commercial condominium is three thousand six hundred and sixteen square feet and is where the Tahoe City Library, Eldorado Savings Bank, and professional offices are located. Both of those structures were built in nineteen seventy-eight and are now forty-five years old. The Inn at Boatworks is a thirty-four-unit motel with one managerial unit. The motel, formerly known as the Fantasy Inn, was built in the late nineteen fifty-fifties and is now over sixty-five years old. The site is approximately seventy-five percent covered by structures and impervious surfaces and has a massive asphalt parking lot that is over an acre in size and covers approximately twenty-eight percent of the entire site and has outdated runoff recapture and infiltration systems. Next slide, please. Here are some pictures. We have a picture on the waterfront showing the wonderful marina in front of us and where the project site will be on the water. And then we have a photo of the motel on State Route twenty-eight, and then the mall on the right, bottom right, and our massive parking lot. Next slide, please. The NOP gives a more detailed explanation of the program, so I won't go through that, but I do want to point out a couple of significant points about SB Architects Design. Along the streetscape, the retail band is single-story to reduce winter shading and massing along the main street. The proposed branded twenty-nine condominiums sit behind the retail until you get to the northwest portion of the site, which is fifty-six feet. And we are proposing to keep the large tree, which will buffer the structure there. Also, the hotel structure consisting of seventy-nine units and program amenities are mostly pulled back away from the shoreline toward the center of the site, again, to break up the massing and the fifty-six-foot height. We have an entirely local development team for their expertise in the basin, with the exception of our architect. The entitlement and design team is comprised of Ogilvy Consulting for Land Use, SB Architects for Architectural Design, Design Workshop for Landscape Design, Brunner Hagen Engineering Services for Engineering, Chip Wilkins and Lou Feldman, land use attorneys, Plenium Builders, General Contractor, and the Farao Group for Public Relations. And our field survey team consists of Sid Davis Consulting, Soils Land Capability Challenge, NV Five, and David Herzog, Hydrological, Geotechnical, Howie Brewick and Associates Scenic Site Assessment, Arbor Solutions, Arbor's Report and Tree Count, LSC Transportation, Traffic and Parking Studies, Lindstrom Archaeologists, and Marvin Architectural for the Cultural Resources Report, Ascent for the Biological Resources Report, HWA Consultants for Parking Management Program, and NCE Planning Level SEZ Assessment. Thank you, and we look forward to the stakeholder comments. And now I'll hand it over to Wyatt, and he's going to address additional project elements.
Thank you. Hi, Wyatt.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Ferry. Wyatt Ogilvy, I've worked with Marie and Vinton since they were in due diligence to acquire the project site and the assemblage of properties through to close of escrow and ultimately assembling the project team and getting to this point sometime later before you all today. We, in putting together the program, worked together to try to put together a comprehensive project in response to the Placer County Tahoe Basin area plan that was adopted and ultimately incorporated a number of project elements beyond the program directly that then went through. The site today has minimal BMPs by the consolidation of vehicles in a structured parking garage. We contain the vehicle impacts to the site, and we can, across not only through use of the garage, but the property, have a comprehensive, modernized BMP program for the site that's right on the shore of the Tahoe City Marina and Lake Tahoe. We met early with the League to Save Lake Tahoe to consider both physical and programmatic elements to the development program in the hopes of reducing trips through a destination resort to have both both interaction with the the community, the physical attributes of the site, and programmatic elements such as employee lockers and showers to hope to get to as close to net neutral in both the vehicle trips or VMT, which will be analyzed during the joint document, as well as based on the extended development across the site, we're very close to net neutral in the commodities that the project requires through the baseline condition versus the proposed project. The site borders Bliss Creek along the East Riley Project Boundary. That creek actually influences the adjoining property. For those of you that are familiar with Tahoe City is the Safeway site. So we don't control the full extent of the creek, but to the extent we can, where we have control and influence, we're going to do enhancements to the creek itself and pull out developments, both building footprint and impervious surface from the creek and the, well, the stream environment zone, the corresponding setback. The, through the design and analysis, both under the document and compliance with TRPA's code, we will comply to the scenic resource elements of the code. By doing so, the the project will help trend this segment of the shoreline towards threshold attainment for scenic resources, both from the roadway and the shoreline component. And then housing, because we are net neutral or close to net neutral by the time we get to full analysis in the document of commodities, we anticipate that the housing element is going to be relatively small. However, we will, of course, comply with Placer County's housing, adopted housing element. That said, both Vinton and Marie are cognizant of the housing challenges that our region faces and the need to to operate effectively, we have to have employees, and our employees need places to live. So they continue to look at options outside of the project itself from an operational perspective. Let's see, next slide. Went to. These are pictures for those of you that aren't familiar with the site. The first is a view over the Tahoe City Marina from the lake. That's a condominiumized slip with the marine operations to the west or left in the image of the of the hotel site. The hotel sits in the foreground. The residential component is behind that. It sits back off of the lakeside trail. The second image at the top from the right is a rendering from North Lake Boulevard. Let's see, so, and then the third image is coming down and to enter the port of cachere of the hotel, and if you went through the port of cachere to the left, you would enter the underground parking garage. Next slide, please. The Tahoe Basin Area Plan has amendments that are being considered, put forth by Placer County. One provision of those amendments is a provision for groundwater interception. The project, as proposed, TRPA issued a soils hydro approval, and the garage is currently cited to sit above the groundwater profile across the site, and parking demand is met on site. However, since we're going through this joint environmental document and in parallel, the area plan amendments are being considered. We're also analyzing an option that would provide for some additional parking beyond the demand of the project that could have a community benefit should those provisions be ultimately adopted and upheld as opposed to taking a step back or having a delay. We're analyzing this option concurrent through the preparation of the joint environmental document. And with that, next slide. I'm going to hand it back to Ms. McMahon. Thank you very much for your time.
So the project will require approval by both Placer County and the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Go to the next slide. It's not shining. It's like, it's coming slowly. So for those of you who are not familiar with the environmental review process, so right now we're scoping. The next step was we will prepare a draft environmental impact report and environmental impact statement. Once that is complete, we'll release the draft document for sixty days, have additional public hearings. We will respond to the comments received during that period in a final environmental document, and then we'll take the project through the public hearing process. So we'll go through the Placer County and then TRPA public hearing process. Next slide. We will analyze potential environmental impacts in the environmental document. We, some impacts, we will, we plan to analyze in detail, such as air quality, water quality, and noise. And then go to the next slide. And then other impacts will be covered with a brief discussion and analysis in the document. Next slide. So in addition to the proposed project that was presented today, we will be evaluating potential alternatives, so the no-project alternative or existing conditions. And then we're also considering analyzing a reduced height alternative and then a reduced units alternative in the environmental document. Next slide. And we are accepting written public comment through February twenty-ninth. The public comment can be emailed to Placer County or mailed to Placer County, and the information is available on this slide. Next slide. And then TRPA is posting all the application documents on the Lake Tahoe Info Parcel Tracker. You just need to enter either in the APN or the project number. So those of you on the APC or in the audience who want to see some more information on this project, you can go to this website. And with that, I go to the next slide, but I believe that that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back over to the chair and the project team's available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brandy and your team for being here. We appreciate it. APC members, now is our time for questions and comments. Anyone in the room? Mr. Oling.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate that. The question that I have is in regards to Bliss Creek. That's on the northeast portion of the property. It states in the notice of, or in the notice that was provided here, that there are some enhancements that are proposed for Bliss Creek. Has there been any effort made to potentially coordinate with the adjacent property owner to maybe include enhancements for the entirety of the creek instead of just one half of the creek?
The Safeway site is is going to be put on the market. So we originally had reached out to the Safeway when we first acquired the Boatworks assemblage and attempted to acquire that property as well, and we're going to plan the site with both properties in mind. That didn't come to fruition. And now the Safeway is moving down the street in Tahoe City to a different site, and we don't know what's going to happen, who's going to own it. So Safeway is, as you would imagine, their focus is entirely on groceries, and they're not really great in the real estate area, so. and they're not really great in the real estate area. So not to say anything disparaging, but that's not their focus. So it would be great if we could get cooperation from our adjoining property owner. We could do a lot there.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you, Vinton. I I agree. It would be very good to have agreement from the adjacent property owner. I mean, you have a great opportunity here to provide some some real improvement to Bliss Creek. And so if any efforts can be made, I think that would be a good thing to have. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Gareth. Others? Ellery? Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think I just wanted to echo Mr. Alling's comments. That was one of mine as well. I think it's a very good one. In addition to that, just noticing, of course, the proximity to Lake Tahoe and the the kind of the prime opportunity to design best management practices that can really help to reduce sediment loads impacts to Lake Tahoe. My agency, the Division of State Lands through the Lake Tahoe License Plate Program recently sponsored a review of best management practices considering climate change and other factors, what would work best in Lake Tahoe. So I think as part of the request for comments, I may submit that to Placer County. Hopefully to the through them to the project sponsors, just for their consideration as they design those water quality infrastructure components.
Good idea. Okay, I'm going to go online. How about Ms. Marolos, Maroles O'Neil?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Great. Speak loudly, though. It is a little muffled.
I, yeah, I'm having trouble with my microphone. I'm happy to see this development of our family's places outside of Tahoe City for the last 50 years. So I was there when the boatworks were built. And it's been really sad to see it not utilized and I'm so glad to see a new development there. My my one question is, and it might not be able to be answered, is Jakes on the Lake has become a staple there in that building. And I I see there will be restaurants. Is there any communication with them or everybody in there will pretty much be displaced as far as restaurants?
Did you hear the question? I don't I don't know if anyone wants.
It's I also.
I'm happy.
Yeah, maybe we can have Vinton contact you offline. It's not really directly related to the NOP. But your comment is taken. Well, taken.
Okay, thanks, John. And thank you, Kate. We'll get you some info on that. Ms. Simon, on to you.
Yes, excuse me. I was just unmuting. I'd like to have more information about your consideration of a reduced height and how that worked and and how you envision the total build out of your parcel.
Okay. They took that down. Ms. Simon? Yeah, we'll see if if maybe we'll circle around to that, but they did take your comment. How about Ms. Chandler?
Oh, yes, thank you. I have two concerns. I guess I'd really like to see more details on what kind of plan they have for workforce housing. As I have lots of friends that live up there and they're having a really hard time finding places to live. So I can see the project meaning people, more people would have to live outside of the community and be driving in and out each day, which would increase vehicle miles traveled. My other concern is that the plan talks does not give any information at all about a specific evacuation plan. Obviously, the density of that piece of land is going to increase a lot. I'd like to see maybe some figures based on what the current occupancy or or of that piece of land would be and what the future might be in comparison to the present. Because it's going to create quite a large increase in population. And I would like to see what you have planned as far as an evacuation plan for that parcel would be. I didn't see it in in your comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Ms. Carr?
Morning. Thank you. I wanted to first echo Ellery's comments and second those regarding stormwater BMPs. My commenter is water related as well. I've I'm somewhat surprised that you could be that close to the lake and have an underground parking structure that wouldn't intersect groundwater. I mean, sounds like the work has been done, but in the event that either during construction or during long-term use of that parking garage, I would want to be interested in seeing your complete analysis on what would be done with that water. Should de-watering be necessary at any point in time? And then a sort of related in the land transfer and development world. Of course, I'm sure you're aware, there's something called a phase one environmental site assessment. And I'd be interested in seeing what that sort of phase one property assessment in the surrounding area revealed, particularly in the surrounding, in the up gradient areas for potential groundwater contaminant sources like fuel tanks or those sorts of things. So in the event that groundwater does get intercepted during construction or long-term use, that we know what's what the quality of the groundwater is to be addressed. Thank you.
Good comments. Thanks, Jennifer. Mr. Hitchcock?
Thank you, Chair. This is a question for Brandy. I didn't see it in the NLP, but I assume that the scenic section will have detailed analysis of the visual magnitude of the proposed project since it's in the shoreline.
Can you hear me? Yes. Yeah, yeah, there is a scenic analysis that's been prepared and it is available on the LT Info Parcel Tracker.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, John. No other hands online. Yes, chief?
Yeah. So just a quick comment on the the fireside representing the basin chiefs and specifically North Tahoe Fire Protection District in this case. Chief Leighton and his fire marshal are happy with the communications that they've gotten from the owners and the developers on this project throughout to make the enhancements to public safety and those kinds of things. And evacuation is absolutely something that they're always considering and talking about. I'll talk more about evacuation in the basin, specifically when we get to board member comments at the end because they all kind of tie together. But I just wanted to say that the the fire department, North Lake Tahoe or North Tahoe Fire Protection District does support the project and the communication that's happened so far with the public safety enhancements.
That's great. It's good to hear. Yeah, good. Kevin?
On a personal level, I'm going to miss our North Lake Tahoe Mall. There's, I never thought I'd say I'd miss them all, but I will miss Boatworks Mall. But I'm happy to see a hotel redevelopment happening in this parcel. It's totally appropriate. My question or a few, but one question relates to transit. I know that the Boatworks is envisioned as being a hub for a future water taxi stop. And this project sits along a high-use trail, a hopeful future water taxi stop. And it's right in the commercial course, so it has a lot of bus service. In the spirit of multimodal development, there's a few things. One, I'd like to know how the we're envisioning a future water taxi stop and maybe moving people from that space up to the road. Doesn't look like that's currently envisioned in the design. And if we were to succeed at getting a functioning water taxi service going, I'd hate to have to look at a redesign or shove a core peg into a round hole. It looks like there's a bus stop called out on the road, but I would really like to see a more modern pullout. Proper bus stop with the shelter, really trying to include, if really trying to focus on multimodal, that seems appropriate. And then a question I had is what's the what's the vision for commercial retail? And more specifically, what's the current amount of retail square footage we have there and what would be proposed in the future project? I can leave it at that.
Thanks, Kevin. And any response to that or?
If Vinton can respond to that.
Yeah, so we feel that the the as the mall exists and we've been operating it for now four years, a little over four years. And the the amount of retail that we're that we we have in the in the mall is usually on the ground floor or second story. Not so much. We've managed to get spaces for nonprofits and the snow museum's up there and we've got professional offices. So you know, we want to fill the mall. It's not pure retail, so to speak. The 7,000 roughly 7,000 acres up on the on the street is where it should be up on the street. And then that combined with the accessory uses of the hotel, which are open to the public. I mean, it's going to be like any other hotel. You know, we want, we want and we want to encourage the public and the locals and tourists to come and visit the site. There will be amenities there that are accessible. The only amenity that's probably going to be not private is the is a pool for liability purposes, you know, got to be controlled. But everything else is going to be accessible and between the the CFA we have and are proposing coupled with the accessory uses of the hotel. We feel that we're really not going to be losing anything that the mall isn't performing on on today's basis. You know, in the current retail market that that we have there. So we feel it's very balanced. I don't think there's going to be a loss. That answer?
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. One last clarifying question. Mr. Ogilvy mentioned in his comments about parking that I think I think the slide said current parking is at 155, 155 spaces proposed as 175. But there's a possibility of going beyond that to provide additional community benefit. I was wondering if you could elaborate on what you're thinking with additional community benefit there.
Brandy, would you mind going back to that slide? Maybe the sorry. It's like 12 or something. So Mr. Drake, the the parking as proposed today meets the shared parking demand, the the initial shared parking demand analysis done by LC Transportation Consultants. That'll be further analyzed on the joint document. It meets the it but the the proposal that you're referencing would be the increase if the area plan provision for groundwater interception was allowed. Then an additional 20 stalls beyond what meets that shared demand today. So it's designed to meet the shared demand. If that provision for groundwater interception was ultimately adopted and upheld, then this option would analyze some additional parking beyond the shared demand that the project generates at peak time. Does that address your question? Because I think what I heard you say was that we had 20 more than this was an addition, whereas we're we're meeting shared demand today. The option would provide for additional parking beyond what's required. And the potential for discussions with Placer County, who's been looking at a cohesive town management for parking, there would be a surplus to potentially have discussions with the county to participate in that program. Okay. Does that address your question?
It does. I was just wondering where the the public benefit component comes in. I was wondering in thinking about it in the broader context of Tahoe City and if we have adequate parking already, or if we actually see a need for additional parking. I guess I'd leave it at that being the question.
Yeah, we're we're not here to answer that, but Placer County has been analyzing things such as alternate Grove Street and different elements of how to better manage parking, you know, for farmers market, et cetera, across the community. Yep. Sure.
Thank you. Any other comments here? Let's see, not seeing any other hands. Yeah, I just, you know, quick comment from me. Having visited that site many times myself, you know, it it seems like redevelopment is very appropriate there. I think you're sounds like you're very thoroughly approaching this process and there's a long way to go. You'll be in front of the public many times in the future. So lots of opportunity coming. I'm assuming the 56 height foot proposal. 56 foot height proposal meets the Placer County area plan. So I'm just assuming that I think I see some heads nodding. I would just encourage you to think about locals and I was happy to hear you say that, Vinton, that you're the property will be welcoming to all to locals, you know, pedestrian amenities will be provided, bike racks, bathrooms, all those things that the public needs. So that's great. And then I was just going to plug the old VMT issue, and I know you're going to be looking at that, but that's a hot topic in the basin. And and I know you'll be looking at that through the analysis of this of this new development, but I know that's important. So are we good here? Let's go on to public comment on this item. So for members of the public who wish to comment on item 6A, now is your opportunity. For those in the room, please come to the podium. For those online, please go to trpa.gov in the calendar heading. Please click on Advisory Planning Commission, February 14, 2024. There you'll find a link to our webinar. Please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine and you'll be called upon. So let's go to the room first and we have Ms. Waller.
Thank you, Ellie Waller. I'm just going to run through a bunch. I will turn these in. I may not get through it. Is 3.8 acres sufficient for the proposed uses stating the project is approximately 75% covered with existing imperio pavement and structures does not tell us if the entire project will fit. I believe the Waldorf Astoria is on 12 acres. What is the definition of discretionary entitlement on the Boatworks project? Who are the approving members? We should have some examples. What variances to code and regulations are being proposed, if any? How will the project meet the no net VMT requirements proposing the following? The project is trip reducing by amenities, buoy charging stations, so on and so forth. Some of these mitigations stated cannot be quantified, in my opinion. Will the EV stations be open to the general public? How do you determine uses by guests towards the net mitigation? Project specifically, how will this project know how many guests are using the public transportation, providing the connectivity and shuttles does not guarantee people using those bicycles cannot be used 12 months out of the year. This is another data point for reduction. Will the project reply or plastered to work with TRPA to relax scenic standards as proposed in the T-Bex Tahoe Basin Area Plan? Story polls should be erected for the public along with whatever balloon studies you're doing. The parking plan assumes shared parking. Explain the shared parking formula. How can you quantify the hours cited in the LSE report for shared parking are those guestaments? Will hotel component be conditioned in the first phase? It certainly should be. We all talk about 60 years. Every project that we don't get a hotel, but the luxury condos go up first. How many TAUs does the project currently have? How much of the existing commercial floor area will be considered lock offs do count as TAUs? The TAU should be deed restricted, no short-term rental capability. How many RUUs does the project have? How many units of affordable workforce housing is required? The Waldorf incorporated 13 to 14 units of fertile into their design. That should go into one of the alternatives. Thank you for the recommendation of one alternative should have three stories, which is what's currently there now. How much land will be utilized for snow storage requirements? I'm back to just 3.8 acres work. How much land will be needed for emergency vehicle turnaround? I know the fire department looks at this. Is there a dedicated delivery drop-off location and dedicated space for that component? How much space is going to be taken up by EV stations and bicycles? With the adoption of the area plan to ensure compatibility, thank you, John Hitchcock, for bringing up also the TRPA visual magnitude. All that scenic analysis, it's a 55-page report online. I'm starting to read it. TRPA may permit additional square footage for that, but all of this needs to come out in the environmental document. Explain the multifamily conversion to condo units. I won't go on. I will submit comments in writing. I'm still looking at this. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Ellie. Other public members in the room who wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, let's go online.
Our microphones are more sensitive now. Mr. Chair, we have four hands raised online so far. The first hand up was Judith Tornese. Judith, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Judith Tornese. I'm president of Friends of the West Shore. We would appreciate, appreciate that the project will revitalize Tahoe City. We have a number of concerns, which we will put in writing, but I wanted to mention that our concern is with mass and height of the project and public access to the recreational area at the lake. Also, the EIR EIS should address cumulative impacts with other projects in the area. And also affordable workforce housing, not achievable housing, but real affordable housing, not onsite, but close by, preferably within walking distance. And lastly, we have a concern with emergency evacuation in the event of wildfire and would like to see that addressed in depth. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Judith.
The next hand up is Doug Flaherty. Doug, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you, members of the commission. I don't know of anyone that's opposed to redevelopment, so let's not paint, you know, the people that are asking questions as NIMBYs. Oh, many people are just simply opposed to cumulative impact overdevelopment and to make sure that we have the proper and complete comprehensive EISEIRs that we need. The TRPA and Placer County have a responsibility to ensure that the EIREIS include analysis of new or changed circumstances, cumulative impacts, and other information which may result in new significant impacts. Not considered in a previous EIREIS, it must provide a comprehensive analysis of all topics they presently intend to scope out or dismiss. Page five is full of a list of items you intend to scope out and dismiss. That's just simply not acceptable. With regard to public safety within the unique Tahoe Basin with its overcapacity roadways, extreme 360-degree high-hazard severity wildfire, and wildland urban interface zones, overcapacity two-lane and traffic coming roadways, and its demonstrated wind and slope environment, the EISEIR must include a comprehensive analysis of new information as discussed in the California Attorney General's October 2022 Best Practices for Analyzing and Mitigating Impacts of Development Projects Under the California Environmental Quality Act. This information was not available during the 2012 Regional Plan or the 20, it should be the 2016 Placer County Area Plan. Despite repeated pleas from the public to do so, Placer County and the TRPA have felt to substantially address wildfire and wildfire evacuation in relation to individual and cumulative new information and changed circumstances. Data and information regarding the increase in intensity of wildfires was not available in 2016 when the county approved the TBAP or during the 2012 Regional Plan process. As stated by the California Attorney General, best practices, guidelines, the changing nature of wildfires under various metrics, frequencies, areas burned, adverse ecological impacts, a number of Californians displaced, is a worsening crisis that will unfortunately be part of California future. All we want you to do is include this study in the EIS. That's, that's all we're asking for. Let's get the data. Let's ensure that we have the data that helps us prevent more, more, more overcapacity in the basin and prevent the Lake Tahoe Basin from being the first piece of information on one of the upcoming Super Bowls like the Heinefeld Fire was. So we just need to look at data. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
The next hand raised is Ann Nichols. Ann, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. This is 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. So, yeah, what would be really nice to know, and for transparency and ease for the public, you know, a fact sheet, including things like total square foot build-out compared with the 46,000 square foot build-out now. I mean, when you cover all that parking area, it becomes the massing and go 56 feet in height. It becomes huge with the underground parking. You know, what are the cuts you're gonna be making? How many cubic yards of soil will be removed? How many truckloads will that be? If, you know, some just basic questions. What will the population of the site be? The 44 employees seems optimistic, but, you know, any of the rationale for that would be great. You know, the condo tell part, so really as far as a hotel, it's, I guess, 79 units. And how many square feet is that portion? You know, and just a fact sheet, be great to see that. It's 57% of the project, if you just look at units, but what is it as far as build-out? The condo tell is 43% of the project as far as units. Again, the square foot build-out would be great to have that. You know, we just need to, to think about really, what is this gonna, you know, what is the phasing? What is the, how many years build-out? Are you gonna be asking for an onsite batch plant like the Waldorf Astoria is asking for in Crystal Bay? And then, of course, the in lieu for workforce housing is completely unacceptable and is not in, in the, if you really care about the community and how much, you know, that would, is not the way it should go at all. But anyway, you know, it'd be nice to see things done that are lovely. I'd love to see, you know, community access to the pool or have two pools. I don't know, you know. As a community benefit, I think it'd be a lot more than 20 new parking spaces or, you know, as far as the community benefit of less encroachment on the Bliss Creek. I mean, that should of course be the case. I mean, that is, goes without saying. Anyway, thanks so much.
Thank you, Ann.
The last hand raised just has a first name on Zoom of Niobe. Niobe, if you can unmute and please state your full name for the record.
Good morning. Hi, this is Niobe Burden. I'm a Tahoe visitor resident and conservation photographer. This is great as a redevelopment. I do have concerns, as many in the community do, about height and making sure it does stay at 56. And in order to visualize this, I think it's important to have story polls put into place. I think story polls are something that really should be mandated on all commercial projects, in-town projects, or actually anything on the lakeside to really verify our scenic thresholds and give the public a visual concept of height and how it's gonna look en masse. The second concern, of course, is providing affordable workforce housing in the design alternatives. How many TAEs versus RUUs, and then how many workforce housing, what sort of workforce housing component? Of course, we all know this is a huge component, a need, and would be a great community benefit to have this for such a large project. And public access, as was pointed out by Mr. Drake, having that more delineated in the plan would be great so that we know that that access is clear to, from the lake for the future water taxi and the transportation hub having a turnout. Those sorts of items obviously are very important. And lastly, I want to echo Doug Flaherty's comment and our concerns as a community to have the EIS updated as a cumulative study from what it's been based on in 2012. Huge difference between now, then, and now. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time and good luck with going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Niobe.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment.
All right. Thanks, Catherine. I'll close public comment. Any final thoughts from APC member Steve and then Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with respect to the VMT and the no new net, does Placer County or TRPA have an analysis of the VMT that existed in Tahoe City when it used to be a thriving community? Because I don't think it's got the VMT that it did at one point in time. I don't know if there was any measuring. So how are you gonna determine if there's no new net VMT? If there used to be a lot of VMT, now we're just based on the fact that now it's, Tahoe City is largely a ghost town?
So I might need to lean a little bit on Lee Chavez, our environmental coordinator, who's online to test her memory as we were going through our own VMT ordinance requirements. I can say that we are currently undergoing Eastern Placer County VMT threshold analysis. So it's looking at more of the present day or using data from the last couple of years. So that has been underway. I know we could also be looking back towards the TBAP and there would be some VMT analysis in there, but Lee, I don't know if you want to add to that.
The only thing that I would add is that this project falls within the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, which did have a VMT analysis that in a cumulative, from a cumulative standpoint, determined that VMT as a whole would go down with the redevelopment proposed with the area plan. But this is definitely something that we will be analyzing. So we've taken the notes down and we'll have this analyzed in the EIREIS.
Thank you. I appreciate the response. I know it's a subject that is gonna require some analysis, but, you know, Tahoe City is not the community it once was. So there should be some analysis that says, well, we used to have this much, now we have this much. So anyway, I appreciate it. Like others, I will be preparing some written comments on the, on the project, but it's, I think in my mind, the team that's been assembled, the property owner, the consulting team, et cetera, is really the kind of approach that I think we're looking for in terms of people coming in to redevelop our town centers. And Tahoe City and Kings Beach desperately need. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Kevin?
So we all know that short-term rentals have filled the need of beds for visitors coming to all of the Tahoe Basin for a while. The whole intent of developing these hotels and commercial core is to bring people back to those, to our town centers. I know there's been discussion in Placer County about reducing the STR cap, like the cap on total number of permits as we actually execute hotel projects. I'm curious where that's at. I think the, speaking as a member of the public, not just this commission, I think that's a hot top. It's, it is a hot topic, and I think we'd like some clarity around what the mechanics of that look like. If we get X number of hotel beds, can we reduce STR cap by at least a comparable number of permits? I think that would help our community get behind a project like this and other proposed hotel projects coming down the pipeline.
Stacy?
Do you want me to answer that a little bit for you right now? So with the TBAP amendments that we're currently coming to TRPA's governing board here soon, we do have a policy that would allow us to explore the reduction of the short-term rental cap when new lodging units come into our town centers. Through that policy, we will then develop that program. So it would be sort of, if, you know, if the TBAP amendments get approved, then that's something we can embark upon in, in concert with the short-term rental program as well, which then could help, you know, feed into this project and future lodging projects that we hope come into our town center. So, so yes, we're working on it, and there is that possibility of that joint effort of reducing short-term rentals for lodging units in our town centers. So more to come.
Good comment, Kevin. Final thoughts online? Jason?
Just to clarify on Mr. Chair's comment, I think it is, it relates to this project, but it's also a broader topic we may need to bring back to this committee is just how we define baseline for VMT. This is the third time in the last six months that this come up as a part of discussions of projects that have come forward, including this one. So I think having a better understanding of what's defining baseline, that may be something we want to do for this project as well as have a broader discussion about how that's gonna be defined moving forward, because the time and place of baseline is very important.
Good point. Good comment. Mr. Young?
I want to say how much I appreciate this entire discussion today. The comments from my fellow committee members and the, and the public as well. It was, I sat here quietly and listened. I'm looking forward to hearing more in the future, but I think the questions today across the board really give a pretty full palette of what everybody should expect in the future regarding future questions. So I really appreciated hearing, you know, I'm taking notes, I'm hearing it, I'm getting it. But we should expect that almost every single question or inquiry we heard today we'll hear again in the future if we don't have answers to them. But it was a, it was just a great discussion today. And I'll end by saying that the regional plan contemplated something called environmental redevelopment. That was the whole concept of what we were trying to achieve with the new regional plan. It's what the new area plans are all supposed to be focused on trying to achieve. And we have to expect that when we get what we asked for, it's going to look different than it looks now. It's going to function differently than it functions now. It's going to fit into the community a little bit different than it does now. But in order to achieve that overall goal of environmental redevelopment, that's where we have to go. So I really appreciate this meeting today. I really hope to hear answers to the questions that were raised today. And I really look forward to seeing how this environmental redevelopment project unfolds over time. So thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Eric. Kevin?
One more point to make. I wanted the second stallor in this car's comments about proximity to the lake and BMPs and looking forward to seeing the more detailed proposal about how we address stormwater runoff from the project. Speaking more broadly, I know that, I'm aware of many projects have been permitted in the last few years that are still permitting what I'll call old-school stormwater designs that are not addressing pollutants of concern. And I look forward to reading the study that, that your agency just did. I would love to see that. But I, I know that it's tricky. It's difficult to address defined particles, but it essentially means either super-high maintenance, expensive mechanical treatments, or settling and infiltration. So I encourage this project to really take a hard look at this, a very creative look at the stormwater treatment design approach and to kind of raise the bar on what we've seen recently, because it needs to happen.
Agreed. Yeah, the underground parking should help, and Placer County will be looking at this, I'm sure, from their TMDL program. So really important. I think we're good. Let me ask a clarifying question to you, John. This says discussion and possible recommendation. Are you looking for a recommendation? Or is this just an? Are you looking for a recommendation or is this just an NOP hearing?
It's just an NOP here and we are not looking for a recommendation. It's just to take comment on the scope of the document.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Good. So I will conclude this item. Thank you all so much for your time today and for being here. Thank you, Brandy and Heather, and good luck on your journey. Okay. Let's move on to item six B. This is an informational presentation on, sorry, I'm just getting a little feedback. This is an informational presentation on amendments to the Code of Ordinances supporting climate resilience, affordable housing requirements for condominium subdivisions, and design standards for mixed use development. Information can be found on page thirty five of your packets. And first I'm going to go to Mr. Hester and then we'll go to Mr. Stock to present on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like the previous item, this is an informational presentation only today. It's designed to provide the public and you all and the public with notice about what we're considering and an opportunity for input, not an action. A few important background points on this. It's designed to implement the regional plan and protect the environment and achieve thresholds. Some of the the key concepts that are in here is walkable communities, which is a reflection of having a mix of uses, mixed use. That's why we're talking about mixed use standards. You may recall there were some amendments related to dark skies and climate that we worked with the University of California Davis students on, and some of those got passed already, and this is a second iteration of those. We anticipate we'll have more climate amendments as time goes on. And probably most important is the affordable housing. We want to make sure that higher end development is contributing to affordable, moderate, and achievable housing. And the reason we're doing that, I think it's obvious, but to make it clear, we want to address the extra regional sprawl, not just within the basin, but extra regional sprawl that's caused when those people who work in the region don't have an opportunity to live here and have to commute in and out from places like Truckee, Reno, Carson, Douglas County on the east and the west shore communities in El Dorado and Placer County. And that increases the impact not only in the basin, but to those communities as well. So that's one of the most important environmental reasons that we are working on affordable housing. And I just wanted to give that context before Jacob starts talking about the specific amendments.
Thanks, John. Jacob Stock, Senior Planner at TRPA, and really appreciate the introduction. Lend some gravitas to to the nitty gritty details that we're going to be talking about today. But again, as John said, this is an informational presentation, so no action today. Sorry, guys. It's an informational presentation on adaptive improvements to the Code of Ordinances. And these are focused on integrating climate best practices into our code, standards for mixed use development, and an affordable housing mitigation for condos. And so we're seeking your input, your ideas, ways that we can that we can improve these this proposal moving forward. So this proposal is really responding to board direction and actually direction from the APC. You guys may recall the Washoe Tahoe area plan amendments that came before you about a year ago. And that was a part of the impetus for the mixed use and affordable housing standards that we'll be talking about today. The climate amendments we've been working on for a couple of years. And so we're looking to bring bring the remainder of those amendments across the finish line relatively relatively soon, but of course, looking to looking for improvements where we can. All of these amendments are aimed at adaptive management of the code as new issues, new technologies arise that that the code needs to address. Next slide, please. So the climate amendments, these originated, well, they originate in the regional plan. But they all they also originate in the Sustainability Action Plan from two thousand thirteen. Eighty percent of that plan has has been implemented or is undergoing implementation. Now, the board directed us to to implement the remaining actions related to the Code of Ordinances in that plan. So changes that were recommended to the Code of Ordinances in in the Sustainability Action Plan. And in the summer of two thousand twenty two, we held a workshop with the board to further prioritize what are the parts of what are sustainability goals, our sustainability actions that are really important for us to to integrate into the code. And so those included efficient lighting standards, standards for renewable energy, standard supporting electric vehicle charging, and mitigations for the impacts of a large special events. So after that direction from the board, we worked with a group of students from UC Davis graduate students in their environmental policy program. They researched these topic areas. They facilitated a stakeholder input process that included representatives of local government, land use professionals, local nonprofits, Liberty Energy, the Washu Tribe, and to further refine some of these ideas and come up with a formal proposal that we presented as an informational item to the Regional Planning Commission. And and that was that was earlier in the summer. We had that presentation. We received some comments from RPC. We went back, further refined our proposal. Some of some elements of that proposal were have already been adopted since through the permitting improvement amendments that came to the board in September. And the remaining recommendations are in this proposal. And next slide, please. So what is in this proposal? What's attachment B to your packet? But I'll walk you through it. It includes a few elements I want to highlight. It includes a traffic plan for for temporary events or for special events. This is already a requirement at the city of South Lake Tahoe for events of five hundred attendees or greater are permitting staff noted to us when we were doing, when we were researching this topic, the need for the the need to to address some of the traffic impacts of large events and we we working with them, we found felt that transportation plan similar to that required by the city could be pertinent for that. So for electric vehicle charging, previously the code hasn't really addressed electric vehicle charging. Obviously, this is an important current and emerging issue. So we included some items related to EV charging, definitions, what is a primary use for for electric vehicle charging, requirements for conduit in large parking lots. These are really aimed at aimed at encouraging EV charging as a distributed use, a distributed accessory use to other uses, while also allowing it as a primary use. And the next topic is standards for for solar energy generation. So our solar standards were designed to to try to streamline the process for staff and property owners interested in installing roof mounted solar while still providing direct protections for scenic quality. And so we tried to do this through a qualified exemption for roof mounted solar that meets certain criteria. An important one being a reflectivity standard for within scenic areas and also a less stringent standard outside of of scenic areas. Next slide, please. So this also includes a reorganization of our outdoor lighting standards with a focus on preserving our dark sky resources. Long range planning staff and permitting staff worked really closely together on developing this section of the proposal. We're trying to balance dark sky preservation with property rights, of course, and and ease of implementation for staff and for property owners. And so this is the item in the proposal that is, I would say, that has changed the most since the last time we we presented this to RPC. So I'm really interested to hear to hear your input on this item in particular. It includes a requirement that outdoor lighting serve a functional purpose, that outdoor lighting not splay offside onto adjacent properties. It sets a color temperature limit. So think about the polluting effects, light polluting effects of a of a bright white light versus a softer yellow light. So encouraging these the softer yellow lights in outdoor lighting. Also, we also propose in this proposal, a lumen limit for commercial properties, that's the intensity of the light, and a requirement to reduce light outdoor lighting after operating hours with, of course, qualifications and exemptions for safety purposes. So really interested to hear your thoughts on that. And we we included a lighting plan as well. This is already a requirement that our our permitting staff ask for for new permits. But it was never codified. So we're including the lighting plan into into the Code of Ordinances to to help with implementation and enforcement for for our permitting staff. Next slide, please. So our mixed use proposal was designed, like John mentioned, was designed to accomplish some of the goals, further accomplish some of the goals of our regional plan. The regional plan specifically calls out mixed use as a tool to achieve our energy conservation and greenhouse gas reduction goals. And I'm realizing that I actually I skipped in my notes what I meant to say on this slide. I was going to give you guys a little bit of background on this. So it's attachment A in your packet, the mixed use standards that we're proposing. It mixed uses is is real is it's relatively simple. It's it means multiple uses that are compatible on a single parcel. Boatworks is a rather large example of mixed use, but it is an example. And the idea is that placing these services and residences nearby reduces energy use and greenhouse gas emissions by reducing dependence on vehicles. We've not previously had a definition or standards for mixed use. So this was really highlighted in the nine four seven Tahoe proposal and in the Washoe Tahoe area plan amendment that came before you all. And you directed us to as staff to develop mixed use standards and an affordable housing mitigation for condos as part of the Washoe Tahoe area plan. We did that. That was adopted by the governing board, and the governing board further directed us to pursue mixed use standards and a similar housing, affordable housing mitigation region wide. And so that's what we're here doing. Uh, next slide. Okay, so here I'll get into a little bit about the requirements that that we're proposing for mixed use or the standards we're proposing for mixed use. These are rather general and we're trying to leave room for for specific local standard, local design standards. But really focusing on achieving those goals of of the regional plan of energy conservation, greenhouse gas reduction through creating walkable areas. And so we include a requirement for non residential uses on the ground floor of structures. This can either be sixty percent of the building frontage or sixty percent of the ground floor. We try to allow some flexibility for for site specific scenarios. But really, the idea here is that non residential, commercial, or services are on the ground floor. They're oriented towards the street where pedestrians are able to to easily easily access them. And and the parcel, the street frontage is designed to allow for that access. So the images here in this slide help to illustrate that a little bit, I think. The top image, you can see a cafe on the ground floor. It's oriented towards the street. It has this nice entrance and windows that draw people in from the street. And then on the second floor, you have residences where people can live. And then the image on the bottom is what it this concept might look like in in Tahoe with local design standards and and architectural style. Next slide, please. So the affordable housing mitigation again is responding to direction from the APC and from the governing board following the amendment to the Washoe Tahoe area plan. So you all recognized the need to mitigate the impact of new market rate housing on the workforce housing gap. And so you and the governing board directed us to address this at the regional level. So we're proposing a that ten percent of units in condominium subdivision subdivisions are deed restricted, are affordable or moderate income housing. And this is the same percentage that was already adopted in the Washoe Tahoe area plan last year. So where did this number ten percent come from? In the Mountain Housing Council and Tahoe Prosperity Center Housing Needs Assessments, they found a gap of just over five thousand workforce housing units for lower and moderate income residents. And this is about ten percent of the total potential units in in the basin. And so we're we're trying to represent that gap reflected in in this requirement. A ten percent requirement can also be found in Placer County's workforce housing ordinance. And it falls about in the middle range of the city of South Lake Tahoe's recent recently passed inclusionary zoning ordinance. So that said, this proposal will not replace Placer County or the city's existing requirements, but rather it would apply to jurisdictions that don't have their own equivalent program. We plan to explore other policy options for mitigating these impacts on affordable housing in the next phase of Tahoe living as well. So the wheels of adaptive management keep turning and we'll continue to of course, address this this major issue in our region. Next slide, please. Okay, so what's next? Well, of course, we want your input. That's why I'm here. I'll be presenting this proposal to the Regional Planning Committee next month. I plan to incorporate your comments, comments from RPC as well, do a final round of stakeholder outreach as well, and work on after that, work on the IEC and Conformance documents aiming to begin a hearing process in in April and governing board consideration in June. And with that, well, that's the end of my presentation. So
Great. Thanks a lot, Jacob. Good job. Really cool topics, I think, all wrapped together. Jason, we'll go to APC member comments here.
Thanks for the presentation. There's a lot wrapped into bundled into this particular presentation. There's two points that that I want to make. One is on the EV charging. One of the unintended consequences we're seeing of requiring EV charging in parking lots is now we have people using parking lots at facilities to charge their vehicles that have nothing else to do at that facility and it's causing conflicts. There's then not enough parking for the activities happening at those facilities. So that's something we need to get thought to and how we're going to manage that across the basin. We're seeing it. A great example right now is in Myers at the Holiday Market. They took up a very substantial part of their parking lot for EV charging, and most of the time the people charging their vehicles there are not frequenting those businesses. So that's just an example of great in concept or in application. I think we can find ways to address that issue moving forward, but that's one thing we really want to be thinking about as we we move forward with EV charging. The second thing is I would encourage us to provide more flexibility. I think I also gave this comment when the the Washoe area plan happened. Just flat requiring ten percent of a project have deed Just flat requiring ten percent of a project have deed restricted housing. Uh, again, good in concept, we need to address the housing issue, but I, I don't want to pin us into a corner where we don't have the option in a situation where maybe you have more than one project in an area. And they can maximize the ability to provide affordable deed restricted housing units by not having it on their site. They can work together. They can have a third-party site. So I think having the flexibility to, under certain circumstances, allow the agencies, both TRPA and the local agencies, the flexibility to say on a site-by-site uh, condition, you know, uh, i- if there's something that's greater than the ten percent, there is an option to do that. Uh, because what happens, and we're seeing this in the projects that we work on outside the Tahoe Basin is typically what happens when you require it on a parcel is those units tend to then be put in the least desirable places. They're often have a lot of complications and they don't end up meeting the needs of the people who ultimately want to use those units. So I think the goal here is we want to increase the number of moderate and affordable units. And we want them to be in desirable locations and in desirable layouts. And that's the end goal we're looking for. Um, I, I'm fine with the, the requirement, but I think we want to be more thoughtful about how in certain situations, we may actually be able to get better outcomes by having some flexibility um, and discretion in the way that we approve those. Thank you.
Good comments. Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Steve, to share, I want to agree wholeheartedly with my colleague, Mr. Drew. Those are important points. And I want to add to that. So a question, I guess, Jacob. So if there's a requirement to only have certain types of uses on the ground floor for mixed use in buildings, are existing ones grandfathered in? Are you gonna tell somebody you gotta move because there's this new rule at TRPA says you can't be where you are?
I'll let John Marshall take that.
Yeah, Steve, this is a prospective application only, so mixed uses coming in as opposed to just applying it to an existing mixed-use building.
Okay, good. I think that's an important clarification for us and for the, for the public and people that actually have uh, you know, things that might in the future with, with then, would they be immediately categorized as non-conforming though if they wanted to do something to enhance their building going forward?
I think that's an issue we need to, yeah. Uh, unfortunately now mics are now very sensitive, so I'll try to remember that as well. We need to look at that and to see how might that affect uh, existing mixed-use developments with those new standards.
Okay. Yeah, so if somebody basically becomes non-conforming, that, I think that's a concern. Um, and then another one, so particularly on the lighting as an example, are those uh, types of lighting readily available, reasonably acquirable? They're, they're not some specialty item that you have to seek out somewhere that may be dark?
Yes, so these are uh, lighting types that are readily available and actually our permitting staff already uh, provide examples of dark sky compliant lighting uh, for uh, permit ease, even though you know, it's, it's not required now. They provide examples for them. Um, so um, yes, the, this is stuff you can buy at Home Depot.
Okay, that's also good to know because, you know, there's examples of say, oh, you should get this or do that. And then, you know, you can't find it. It's not reasonable to acquire. So that was my concern. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Steve. Other comments in the room? Ellery and then Stacy?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Um, cause often in Lake Tahoe, we talk about adapting to climate change rather than participating in reducing emissions to help address climate change to be good, begin with. So I appreciate um, TRP kind of tackling this part of it. Um, just kind of getting into some more of the nuts and bolts of my comments. These are real small comments, but just related to um, to renewable energy. I know that um, installation of solar panels, just depending on the type of solar panel that's installed can really um, be impacted negatively by shade and we have a lot of trees here. Um, so there may be other opportunities to achieve the same goal of utilizing renewable energy either through participating in um, community-based renewable energy projects. Um, sometimes utilities will provide an option to um, to buy renewable energy, have hundred percent of your utility need um, provided by renewable energy. Um, so you can get it through your utility provider, provider rather than installing the rooftop solar yourself. Um, so just a, a recommendation to, to maybe reach out to your utility stakeholders and see what alternatives exist. Um, second is related to energy efficiency. A lot of times the technology is seen as the, as the thing that gets you the energy efficiency, but how it's used is also very important. Um, so just a, just a comment, for example, with HVAC, there are um, commissioning um, um, standards that are often applied to test the equipment, make sure it's performing as it's intended to be um, operated to maximize that energy efficiency potential. Um, and then lastly, I wanted to provide kind of a corollary to Mr. Drew's comments related to EV charging. Um, a lot of times if EV charging isn't available at home, people will seek it elsewhere. And then they will tie up those EV charging stations because they need to get charged. Um, so maybe um, a consideration given to new multifamily housing or condominium developments um, to include EV charging there as well.
Good point. Yeah. Stacy?
Thank you. Uh, Jacob, great, great presentation. Um, I want to also echo a few um, items. I really appreciate the mixed use um, standards that you're incorporating. I do have one quick question um, on section thirty-six point one four B um, where it's requiring the sixty percent of ground floor area. I noticed you put a must in there and I'm, I'm curious if that should be a shall um, or something where um, want to have more teeth with it. Um, cause I think it's a great, great concept. So I just wanted to throw that out um, there. And then um, also just with the, the lighting, I, I'm curious if you explored like timers or, you know, incorporating sort of that um, use and then timelines for the Christmas season. You know, a lot of people, you know, if what we're trying to achieve here, um, that might be helpful. Um, and, and just the reader knowing what, what's required of them. Um, and then also I was just curious if we had a definition for public safety signs. I know we've had some inquiries um, in Placer County about these signs and kind of where they fit in and how. And, and so I thought I would just share that um, today as well. And then um, just again, maybe a, a clarifying, you know, for future meetings, but on the temporary events, I'm just curious why five hundred and not maybe something less like a hundred, you know, just, just understanding impacts, but I'm curious if five hundred is a significant number that I'm just not aware of being newly on this commission. Um, and then lastly, I just, I want to state that I, I know we really appreciate the efforts of exploring qualified exempt projects and activities. Um, and I think I can say that for across the board of both, you know, the, the counties, um, but also the public. So um, thank you. That's all I had.
Thanks, Stacy. You want to respond to that?
Uh, yeah, I can respond to a couple of those. Um, in terms of uh, timers, we didn't not consider uh, timers. So thank you for that. And I can go back and, and take a look at that. Um, cri- uh, Christmas lighting, I believe is, if it's not addressed in the code, I know it's addressed in the um, in, in the, the design, building design standards. So um, it's not, wouldn't be affected by this. So everyone's Christmas lights are safe. Um, it is in, it is in here. Okay. Um, a- and in term, and for, for the, the size of, of events, you asked, yes. So the, the purpose behind five hundred was just, it was borrowing from the city of South Lake Tahoe's uh, ordinance. So um, certainly open to other suggestions, but that was a number that was, that, that's already used in the basin.
Thank you all. Let's see, I don't see any hands here, but I am. Yes, sorry, I was gonna go online. Yep, let me go down. We have quite a few hands online. So um, Kate, let's go to you first.
Okay, can you guys hear me better now?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, great. Um, Jacob, great. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple. Um, and, and I know we all saw this, uh, or I assume most of us back east. When the temperature dropped and these charging stations, the, the lithium ions travel much slower um, and produce energy uh, much slower when the temperature drops. And they had a logistical nightmare of cars in line because it was taking over an hour or so for these cars to charge. So when we're looking at service stations and things like that, just to logistically keep that in mind in case we did have a winter like we did last year and temperatures are dropping so that we don't have lines of cars, you know, affecting the, the rest of a parking lot or a service station. Um, because that, that, that could definitely happen unless these charging stations, I'm not an expert um, that we are planning, like they have ones that have more energy or I don't really know how they work, but I know they had a lot of trouble back east. So that, that would be my only comment and moving forward with these stations to logistically make sure they're, they're prepared for that.
Good comment, Kate. Thanks. Mr. Young?
Thank you. Um, uh, good discussion. I have always appreciated TRPA's attempt to tie their processes and, and regulations to some numbers or some data, some rational nexus. That, that's always been important to me. Um, and I recognize that's where the ten percent number comes from, that that's an attempt to do that. And I, and I respect that. And looking to South Lake Tahoe's number of five hundred, that, that's good. Um, maybe being a little bit more open about that would be, would be good. Um, when you do do that, when you tie it to a number, um, you kind of automatically become a little unflexible, just like we heard about some of the comments in that. So that is a trick to pull off, but it's a necessary trick to pull off. So I sincerely appreciate saying, okay, this is, we're gonna say ten percent. This is how we got here. This is the reason it's for ten percent. But we really, and, and that, that's good and we have to do that. But we can't stop there. We really do have to say, but here's some, here's some ways we can uh, achieve that same goal by building in that flexibility that was talked about earlier. Those two things are not mutually exclusive. You can, you can build your regulations on a, on an empirical uh, rational basis and still have flexibility. Um, and you're good at that. You've done it in other things. So I think we need to try and do it here. The other thing that I've always really appreciated from TRPA is uh, a desire to really seek out best practices and then build your own best practices. So I, I, I see that some here. Um, uh, but I'd like it, I'd like to hear more about it. I know that dark skies um, has an enormous amount of best practices built into that entire nationwide, even global effort. Um, we can uh, uh, build regulations based on best practices. Or we can uh, build our own based off what we've heard about best practices, just like you do with so many other things. So if that's what you're doing with dark skies, I'd like, I'd like to hear that. Or I'd like to know that you did um, uh, do some review of best practices. And then that'll bring me to my, my, my last thing. And that's where I think some best practices may still be evolving. Especially in regard to EV vehicles um, and charging stations. And, and I wonder to what degree we can even identify best practices across the country for how you say, okay, uh, a new multifamily area or a new, a, a new commercial development has got to provide this. Um, I know that our, our, our transportation agencies are trying to do the distributed thing. I'm not gonna argue with that, but how do we build best practices around that? And I don't know that anybody's really successfully done that. And I didn't hear in the presentation here that that's what we're trying to do. So um, uh, once again, thank you very much for trying to use data and a rational nexus for your, for your thoughts and your regulations. Let's not let that get in the way of flexibility when it's necessary. And um, on these other efforts, they're great efforts. I support them very much. I'd like to hear more about the, how nationwide and local best practices are, are being used to inform us as we go along. So thank you very, very much for the discussion. I, as always, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric. Good comments. Mr. Hitchcock?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Jacob, for that presentation. I just had a, a one clarification question. Um, your mixed-use design standards, the code section thirty-six point four. Um, if local jurisdictions were to um, incorporate substitute standards related to mixed-use design in our area plans, would those basically supersede this section of the code or are we um, or we have to be consistent with thirty-six point one four?
I, I, the, unless we put something specific in these amendments, an area plan, because it's part of the regional plan, would preempt um, code, inconsistent code requirements. So, but that is an issue we should track and make certain to get everyone's input on whether we want TRPA to do, you know, a minimum requirement. You can do more in a area plan or how we might want to set that up.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to create a, I wouldn't want to create a conflict between, you know, standards that we have in area plan and your, in, in your code of ordinance.
There's no reason that they can't, there, there's nothing precluding substitute standards for these items.
Okay. Thanks.
I, I would just add to that, um, that I did a review of, of the area plans against these standards. And currently I couldn't find anything that was in conflict with these standards, but you know, and as John said, you know, future standards, um, you know, could create some inconsistency, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing to be aware of. Set a minimum and, and make it clear that we could go a little farther in an area plan. That would help. Thanks, John. Ms. Chandler?
Yeah, hi. A great presentation, Jacob. Just a, also a clarification. Um, you mentioned that the traffic mitigation was tied to a South Lake Tahoe city ordinance. Does that mean that it would also apply to events in state line?
Um, yes, if, if, if this were adopted, then this would apply basin, basin-wide.
Thank you very much. Yep.
Thanks, Susan. Ms. Carr?
Hi, thank you. Um, I have two things. Um, one is related to service station amendments and, and then the other's sort of a question about rooftop solar. But for the service stations, you have an amendment on page sixty-two that amends table twenty-one point four dash A um, about primary uses for service stations. And I may be struggling with this a little bit because I don't know exactly how primary uses are used in, I don't know, permitting or things like that. What the effect of having something designated as a primary use sort of does for you. But um, under service stations, the existing language at the end of that paragraph, um, I'm having a little trouble wrapping my head around because it's got several double negatives in there. But it says service stations do not include um, the retail sale of gasoline as an accessory use to food and beverage retail sales when limited to not more than two pumps. So, so there's an exclusion in there that appears to have service station not being a primary use when it's like a convenience store that has two gas pumps or less. So um, I was wondering if, how sort of EV might fit in there because an EV servicing station, much like Because an EV servicing station, much like sale of gasoline service station, could be maybe a primary use where there are less than two pumps. And one that comes to mind is like the 7-Eleven in South Lake that has no pumps at all. Never seen a 7-Eleven without pumps, but there is one there. So if they put in EV charging stations, would they benefit from having the designation as a primary use? So you don't have to answer that right now. I'm just trying to figure out how that works, if that makes sense. And I'm sorry, I get in the weeds sometimes. I apologize. The other question I had that sort of just kind of came up as a result of the presentation was about the reflectivity cap in the scenic areas for rooftop solar, which I completely appreciate. We don't want a bunch of light reflecting off these things off roofs. But you said it's not going to apply outside the scenic zones. And this may just be something to have some staff just do some Googling on. But at least for the larger solar installations, maybe not rooftop scale, but the big ones. I'm reading more about the effect that they have on localized heat production. I don't know if, how much heat is produced by rooftop solar or if the reflectivity cap would also have a co-benefit of reducing heat production off of rooftop solar. But in a, I don't know, maybe it's a stretch, but in an environment where we rely heavily, you know, a large chunk of the year on winter sports, would we not necessarily want to promote something that generates heat? But I don't know. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Good comments. Thanks, Jennifer. I just have a couple of quick ones. I support Jason and Mr. Young's comment about the 10%. And I think being more explicit in your presentations about where you got that number and then thinking about flexibility, I don't know if that fits or not, but I think those were good comments. On the lighting standards, is there anything that would require a retrofit? I don't know if you've thought about that, but if someone pulls a permit to do something else, you often require them to do BMPs. Would we make them install like dark sky compliant lighting too? I don't know.
I can answer that. Speaking with permit staff, currently, when someone pulls a permit for their home, they do have to, and they're out of compliance with our exterior lighting standards. They do have to come into compliance. So that's one of the ways that enforcement works for our outdoor lighting standards.
Great. Thank you. And then one really minor one. In 3681H, it says, "Commercial operation of searchlights for advertising or any other purposes prohibited." I don't know if you meant to say spotlights, but when I think of a searchlight, it's like a helicopter with a light looking for someone. I don't think we want to prohibit that activity, but just a minor comment to look at. Any other comments from APC members? Good. Let's go to public comment. Now taking public comment on this item, this is item 6B. I'll go first to the room and then online. For members online, if you wish to address the APC, please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your telephone, you'll be called upon. So let's go to the room first, and we have Ms. Waller.
Ellie Waller, I wasn't going to provide comments, but some of the comments from everybody here triggers. This isn't a blank slate, and asking affordable housing to be shared with developments that sometimes take years has to be taken in consideration. I understand the flexibility of trying to get 10% somehow, but I don't find that as achievable as putting a 10% issue on this. And in the past, and I don't know how we rectify the issues, but the larger employers that have never had their fair share needs to be revisited somehow. I don't know how you go back and have a larger, like the ski resorts or Barton Hospital moving into Douglas County in the future, depending on those employees that work outside the basin and want to be able to live in the basin. We need to start to look at a different range of how we get this affordable. Bliss Creek, thank you for bringing that up. That's another thing about sharing and how we get this done. Maybe Plaster County needs to be investigating and looking at a total EIP project for that. Why just let the developers do it? I know the developers should be accountable for some of it, but there could be a share in an EIP project. Of course, we've all talked about the VMT and how this is going to be related to getting maybe more EV into the basin. But let's not, at the expense of the people that are never going to give up their gas cars, impose too much of that. I think there needs to be a bigger look at that. I'm really concerned about the visual issues of rooftop, depending on how tall a building is with the solar. I live in the valley, and I have an issue with homes that are going into Clear Creek, Tahoe, that the reflectivity uphill going downhill into the subdivisions is horrible. And so it's all angles of looking at where this solar arrangement might be affected, not just a scenic zone. One size doesn't fit all. I'm hearing that here. How it works in South Shore may not work in North Shore. That's always an issue when we do regional plan updates. The area plans can take it down to another level. Okay, I'll do that in closing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? Seeing none, let's go online.
Mr. Chair, so far we have one hand raised online. Ann Nichols, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi, thank you again. I'm confused on this agenda, whether the kids in Davis, you know, the graduate program did all of this, or did they only do night sky? Or are they doing mixed use also? So the mixed-use requirement, you know, does it include the office for the project? So that, you know, that's not delineated. So is that really mixed use or is it just the project? So then also, so that needs to be clarified. So you have to think about this. Then the other thing is, you know, the basing stuff, about the 10% requirement of affordable or workforce housing is based on the Prosperity Center or, you know, as a 10%. Who are the Prosperity Center? They're very well-meaning people, I'm sure. They've been paid to do this stuff. They get, they're quasi-governmental. They get paid to do this. Is it really legitimate? Can we really rely on this? Like, for instance, the Walter-Festory project, which is 800,000 square feet, has to do 1400 units or 14 units, which is really nothing. And I'm not sure that the boat works, which says they only have 44 employees, and they don't give us a population or a build-out. So we need to know a lot more, and I hope you will ask all these questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hand raised to comment.
Thanks, Catherine. All right, I'll close public comment. Any final thoughts here? Good. All right, Jacob. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Have a good rest of the day. Okay, we're on to item seven, reports. And I'm going to go over to Mr. Hester for the executive director report, including upcoming topics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two parts to my report. One is an update on, excuse me, items you've already considered. The housing amendments that you considered, I will leave most of that to general counsel to discuss. I did want to point out one thing that several of you brought up is, in those amendments, it talked about stormwater, green stormwater infrastructure that would be approved by NDEP or LaHuntan and working up those standards. And so we are working on a request for proposal that will involve people like NDEP and LaHuntan. As we develop those, might get to some of the issues someone brought up. So that's going forward. The rest of the information on that, I will leave to John. The Tahoe Basin Area Plan will be at the governing board in two weeks. So that's kind of an update on items that you have already acted on. I've got a number of upcoming items. The dates are tentative, but I think closer in dates, I'm pretty sure. We'll be bringing you the annual report in March, along with a threshold update, update on the threshold update. Washoe County has an area plan amendment on school uses in the Wood Creek area. That's tentatively scheduled for March, as well as an update on the active transportation plan. In April, tentatively scheduled is Meeks Bay EIS. And then we tend to, tentatively have scheduled an action on the item. You just heard the mixed-use climate change and subdivision item. And then the, a couple of amendments on the tourist core area plan and Tahoe Valley area plan are tentatively scheduled from the city of South Lake Tahoe in May. So lots of things coming up, and that's the end of my report unless there are any questions.
Thanks, John. Get on questions. Looks like it. Mr. Marshall for the general counsel status report.
Thank you. As John said, the board adopted, which I think was either a unanimous or near unanimous recommendation for the housing amendments at their December meeting. Excuse me, the right page. And they went into effect within the next 60 days. But some of the incentives are contingent on area plan amendments, either opting in or opting out, if you remember. And just kind of as an editorial aside, it has been somewhat of a tragedy, particularly in California, that environmental statutes have been used to basically block affordable housing initiatives. And that brings us to this lawsuit, which was filed last week by the Mountain Area Preservation Foundation, seeking to enjoin the housing amendments for a variety of reasons, but essentially claiming that the agency did not look hard at the alleged environmental impacts associated with the amendments as adopted. I can go through their various arguments, but essentially they focus on the adequacy of the IEC and whether or not the IEC is supported by sufficient evidence in the record to essentially say that there was no unmitigated environmental impacts associated with the proposal. Now, if you remember, the proposal was how to use, really, it only related to how to use the existing bonus unit pool for affordable and moderate in workforce housing. So it didn't approve any new development. It was just identified as to how to incentivize getting those bonus units on the ground in areas that are environmentally beneficial as opposed to spread out throughout the basin. And essentially, the Mountain Area Preservation, who, to my knowledge, has not been present in the basin before on any significant environmental issues, has decided now that affordable housing is their next target. There are some interesting things about the case. The case has been filed in the Eastern District of California in federal court. It's been assigned to a judge, that a magistrate judge in the beginning. So we don't know if we decide to go with this district court judge who that would be. So I can't give you any intel on that. The lawsuit is, you know, based as an administrative record review case. And so what that means is first, we'll have 60 days to answer. We have 45 days to prepare the administrative record. Then briefing will happen. And then the court gets to decide on, basically on the papers, there might be a oral argument. But that whole process takes not an insignificant amount of time. We'll be looking at ways either to efficiently litigate, but we're planning to present a strong defense. The rules remain in effect until a court tells us otherwise. And if you have any specific questions, I can talk about them. I think we provided everybody with a copy of email, included you in the distribution email. So you have all of a copy of the complaint. Steve's holding up one right now. So if you have any specific questions, I can talk about that. But we're looking forward to defending what we think is a strong decision based on a good record. That's it.
Great.
Oh, and just in other news, we have hired two new attorneys together with expanding the number of hours that we have from Marsha Birch and our first attorney, Graham St. Michael, who will be starting next Wednesday. He's from the basin, and he works for the California Department of Conservation as an attorney. And he's been around a while. He worked for CTC. And so we're looking forward to having him come on board soon. That's it.
Great. Some help for you. Good. Questions for John? We're good. Okay, now it's our turn for reports. So I'm just going to go down the table here. How about Stacy? Okay, Mr. Drake? All right, chief.
Yeah, thank you. I do have a couple, and they're kind of just updates for the whole group and the members of the public. We know that there's a ton of concern, and we even got some comments today on evacuation and wildfire threat. I'm representing the basin chiefs. I want to assure everyone that all of the fire chiefs in the Lake Tahoe Basin are very concerned about the wildfire threat and about evacuations. With that being said, I actually think about it every day, even when we have snow on the ground. And I know some of you guys are shocked that know me, but it's a big concern. Along the lines of what we're doing about it is we've formed a group of folks together, actually 33 different agencies from throughout the Tahoe Basin. So it's 13 different fire agencies, 11 different law enforcement agencies, and then seven agencies that are either county DOT or state DOT, along with Nevada D E M and Cal O E S. We're having a monthly meeting with all of those stakeholders coming together to develop a basin-wide evacuation plan that could be shared with the public because we get the comment a lot that there's no plan, there's no evacuation plan, blah, blah, blah. And there are plans, but they're not a one-stop shop, and everybody, they don't fit everybody in the basin. But obviously, any evacuation like we saw in the Caldor Fire greatly affects all of the agencies in the basin. And so we're meeting actually monthly right now. We're sharing documents. Eldorado County has a deputy fire chief from Eldorado Hills, who's now been assigned to Eldorado County O E S. That's kind of hurting the group, if you will, on a document that is going to be a one-stop shop for everybody. And so the hope of it is, or not the hope, but the plan is, is that each of the agencies will put all of their specific information to their agency on this document. And so it'll be accessible to the public, that the public can look, and they can say, oh, I live in Kings Beach. What are the particulars here? Where are the, what are the main routes in and out? What's the shelter in place location, stuff like that? And so everybody's kind of compiling that information together into this document with a goal of having it prior to the summer in place and released to the public. So at a future time, we're hoping to be making some public presentations on that document. Another really important aspect is how you notify the community, right? A lot of, all the counties and all the agencies have a reverse 911 system that you can sign up for, whether you're a tourist or just visiting, or you live here, or you have a second home here, and you can get those notifications. So we're trying to incorporate all that into the document with QR codes and stuff that people can sign up for. There's a new program called Perimeter Solutions that is an evacuation software kind of deal. If you An evacuation software kind of deal, if you if you would, that is very simple to use. All of the counties right now that touch the lake, with the exception of Placer, have adopted this new program. Um, what I like about it is it's it's live all the time. So if there's an evacuation going on, they they. Push out this website in this link. And then then it's real time and you can click on it and you can look and you can see where the incident is and where you're supposed to evacuate. Um, and they update it constantly. So it's not an app, but it's actually. A website and a link that that they share out and they've been using it quite a bit. It was developed after. The fires in California in the Napa area around Santa Rosa and all that. Um, and so like I said, all the agencies are using it with the exception of Placer, but Placer has one that is similar. And so those links will be there too. We're trying to get everybody on the same page. But I I just kind of wanted to mention that because everybody talks about evacuations all the time and what are we doing? And you know, the the counties are different, the agencies are different, the states are different. But all of everybody is coming together and. And gonna have this document that is gonna be a one-stop shop that we're all gonna have on our websites. We're all gonna have it on our social media. And we're just gonna blast it everywhere and hopefully T R P A, I'm sure, will have a link to it on theirs and everything like that. So I I do think even though evacuation is a major concern, there are some good things happening with it. We learned a lot of lessons during the Caldor. And we're moving forward. Um, the other quick comment I have is on the Tahoe Fire and Fuels team. I think um some of you know that. I sit as the chair of the MAC, the Multi-Agency Coordination Group that oversees the Tahoe Fire and Fuels team. Um, we just put together and T R P was a big component of of host helping us host this. We did a two-day workshop. Um, just recently, um, we've got a MAC meeting coming up where they're gonna report back to us and tell us what they accomplished at that workshop. But one of the really important things is. The MAC had given about this time last year four main priorities to the Tahoe Fire and Fuels team that we want to make sure that everybody knows. Um, the number one priority is fuels reduction along evacuation routes. You know, so that we don't get caught in a Hawaii or or a. Paradise-type fire situation, and we have some big concerns in the basin that we could get caught in those situations. So doing that fuels reduction along those evacuation work uh corridors is our number one priority. Number two is fuel breaks around infrastructure. That one is the number two priority, but it's probably one of the easiest ones to accomplish because we already have had. We've already done fuels reduction around major infrastructure. I'm talking cell phone towers. Radio repeater towers so we can communicate in emergency, but it needs to be expanded. It needs to be improved on. Number three is fuel breaks around communities. That's a tough one because. The Forest Service land is what touches our communities and getting the approvals through the Forest Service to do it is complicated. But Tahoe Douglas was the first one to accomplish one of these in the Skyland neighborhood, just south of Skyland on Highway fifty. As a um, as a showcase piece, if you will, a test piece to show what it's gonna look like. Um, we had a little initial concern from the community over it, but once we did it, we got almost hundred percent. Of the folks in on it and they liked it. Each of the communities or fire districts around the lake is supposed to be doing the same thing. So that we can show the public what we're talking about when we're talking about a shaded fuel break um along a community, right? So that's number three. Number four is probably the hardest one to accomplish, and it's strategic fuel breaks that actually follow ridge lines. And take it from the Sierra Crest to the water. Now, these are strategic fuel breaks that we build ahead of time. Three hundred feet on either side of the ridge with thinning and and fuels reduction. So that if we do have a major fire like the Caldor or the Angora and it's moving fast, we have a place to get ahead of it and make a stand. Those are a lot harder to accomplish. We're also talking about Forest Service land and that kind of thing. Um, so. We're really pushing hard. The Tahoe Fire and Fuels team has done some amazing things since it was formed after the Blue Ribbon Commission and the Angora Fire. But but now you have chiefs like myself pounding their fists on the table and saying. This is all great. We got great cooperation. We've got these awards on our cooperation, but we gotta get some work done. Let's get some work done. Let's connect the dots. Let's have priorities and make it happen. And that was kind of the focus of the the workshop. So just kind of wanted to share that because I know it's on everybody's mind, even when we have snow on the ground. And um with as weird as the weather's been over the last five years. Um, you know, we can't bank on what what it's gonna look like for fire season coming up. You know, we're still trying to recover from a drought. We still have an unhealthy forest. Forest health is is utmost important to the lake. So we're working on it. We're thinking about it and we just wanted to share that as the chief's group.
Great. Fantastic update. Thanks a lot. Garth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that there's a uh on the Nevada Department of Transportation website. Um, there's the East Shore Corridor Management Plan for U S uh Highway fifty. Um, and there's going to be a public meeting for that on February twenty-seventh at four-thirty at Georgia Tell High School over in Zephyr Cove. Um, the it's my understanding that the uh the plan does not include any lane reductions as. Previously it has in the past. I know it was a big concern for a lot of people. Uh, but I encourage everyone to uh get involved and uh make sure that they um. You can either attend the meeting or you can provide comments uh via the website. So. That's it.
Good heads up. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chief, for that very comprehensive update, uh particularly with regard to evacuation planning. So um, I represent the Tahoe Transportation District on the Board of the California Association of Councils of Government. So we had a meeting and our annual regional leadership forum. Uh, last week down in Monterey and there was a lot of discussion about. The decline projected in fuel tax for road improvements and other transportation improvements. Because of the increased number of electric vehicles. And yet electric vehicles, of course. Do their share of damage on the roads because they're heavy and uh but they're not paying any fuel tax. So I think we're gonna be hearing a lot more about what's gonna be done about about this crisis. And I just wanted to bring it up today and maybe at some point in time we'll. We'll get a presentation, you know, here or a T T D. Just so people kind of know what's out there on the horizon. That's a pretty significant impact um. To what we have thought for many years was our source of transportation funding. So, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Ms. Daller.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, just wanted to thank everybody for the nomination and uh your vote of confidence. Um, so thank you and I'm looking forward to serving as vice chair. Um, and the the comment was made um that it was conditioned on Brendan continuing to serve as chair and. Um, you know, that's not a lie. Uh, I wanted to um just acknowledge Brendan. Um, just how effective and and efficient you are in facilitating these meetings. In conformance with open meeting law. I think you're very thoughtful about it and just appreciate your leadership on this commission.
A couple of things, those that are interested in trails, parks, open space, the the California. Um, Trails, Parks and Open Space Conference could be held at Everline Resort in Olympic Valley at the end of April and early May. Um, it's a statewide conference, but it's gonna be local. Uh, there will be one of the days I'll be running a workshop. Uh, looking at some recreation access and trail. Related things on the West Shore, um, something you're familiar with. Uh, so just if you're interested in that, it certainly. It's it's nice when these statewide conferences are here, um, and gets to highlight some of the things we're doing. Um, on that note, uh, some of you may have experience on your projects that um. Lohaten is um putting much a a very different uh emphasis on enforcing the construction. Stormwater general permit. Um, there is a statewide permit. We have a uh. Separate but similar permit for the Tahoe Basin. There's been some very interesting interpretations that the agency is making this last year. Um, and. There has been some relatively aggressive enforcement um. That has occurred over the last six or nine months, which is gonna impact a lot of a lot of projects uh in the basin. Uh, and my guess is at some point, the interpretations that are currently being made will be challenged. Um, but it is something that we need to be aware of because it it will put extra emphasis on large construction projects, whether they're they're public or private. Um, on that note, what what what's interesting is that um. I I noticed this last fall, there were two uh fuels reduction projects that occurred in areas that I spend a lot of time in. And uh pretty critical projects, but they're one of the projects that's exempt from having to comply with construction stormwater permit requirements. And the B M Ps were essentially non-existent. And I know that I had a number of people mention that to me. Um, on multiple occasions, and I think it makes it very difficult in the larger scheme of things when what we're trying to accomplish with water quality in the basin. Um, whether you're an enforcement person from T R P A and D E P or Lohaten. Uh, or you're the the entities trying to develop these plans and encourage people to implement them. When we have these large-scale projects that essentially have zero B M Ps. So it's something that I think we need to be thinking about. Um, we're. There is um a message that sent. Whether it's it's actively being done or not, when we don't enforce the rules on. Projects that are very visible to people. And uh it makes, you know, many of our jobs much tougher. So it's just something to to keep in mind. It was uh. Really was relevant this last fall, um particularly one of the larger ones that was happening in in South Lake. So it'll be interesting to see what happens with um this new enforcement strategy from Lohaten. And then some of the 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 work that's happening in the basin. Yeah, the the big one is the one that was by um in Myers um on off Onitis. Uh, that was that was the biggest one. Um, uh, and the other one was further out uh kind of in and towards the end of Chris. Yeah. Exactly. Yeah, yeah, pretty important fuels management projects and and the one um. The the one by Onitis is just it's it's very visible because there's so many recreation users there. Um, that's the one that I I received the most comments on. So we gotta balance being able to do these fuels, really important fuels management projects. But do them in the right way so that we're reinforcing the messages that we're we're trying to send from a water quality standpoint as well.
Yep, good point. Looks like Mr. Letton wants to respond, so we'll go to you next, Ben.
Um, yeah, thanks. I really appreciate the comments there. I didn't catch the name of the of the person who just uh spoke.
That was Jason Drew.
Jason Drew, okay. Yeah, so um really appreciate the comments and I would just uh offer to Mr. Drew that, you know. Um, anytime that he or any members of the public are aware of a particular project um. Uh, in the uh forestry-related project, um, we are available to respond to those, you know, at any time. A lot of our um vegetation management projects are uh what we call automatic enrollment. Um, meaning that they're more uh de minimis type projects and in an effort of streamlining permitting. Um, we, those are um automatically enrolled, so it's difficult sometimes to track. The um, the number of projects that are enrolled, but certainly if they are not meeting the general conditions associated with those. Uh, categories, uh, that is a violation of our timber waiver and we need to respond accordingly. So we need people's help. In terms of making us aware of issues, we do our best to be out in the field, you know, as much as we can. Given our staff uh limited resources, but we are very committed to respond to any sort of complaint-driven issue. Uh, out there, you know, on on the uh the forested landscape. And I really do like the comments in terms of. You know, the balance between uh the need for those that regulation, um, but also, you know. Uh, you know, balancing that with uh the 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 streamlined ability of 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 permitting and keeping. You know, those forest projects moving forward. And then all I will say in terms of the the Tahoe Construction General Permit. Cause I can't speak on it on the on active enforcement cases, but I do support the comments that we are creating a a greater presence in the basin. Because we've seen um a a pattern of violations uh for that permit. Um, and in particular where we have uh contractors that are coming in from outside of the basin. Who um are not as familiar as they should be in terms of what those requirements are. Our Tahoe Construction General Per- Permit is very similar to the statewide Construction General Permit, which those contractors should be. A very familiar with, but we've seen a pattern of violations and we've done a lot of internal internal um resource planning to be able to. Uh, prove up, put forth a a much greater effort and create more of a presence because ultimately, you know, those uh. Any sort of discharges associated with those permits could reach the lake and we are trying to do our best to minimize the risk of, you know. Any sort of discharge of sediment and other pollutants. So I just wanted to to follow up with that, you know, for. Uh, the speaker and then all the rest of the A P C committed uh members and the and the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Assuming you don't have any other update, right?
Uh, well, uh, the timber waiver itself, which is the permit for our forestry-related projects. Is going to be considered by our board in April. Um, so in light of the chief's earlier comments and then the the last speaker, I would encourage anybody to. Uh, participate. I think there'll probably be another A P C meeting between now and then, which I can remind folks. Uh, but uh, that is a a permit renewal that's coming up that we would really appreciate everybody's uh input on. And that's that's that is my report. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Ben. Ms. Carr.
So, um, yeah, I'll I'll tag on with Ben. Um, you know, this um concern expressed about. Um, uh, water quality protections and the balance with fuels reduction is a new issue for me. Um, and so I just want to let you know that I intend to follow up with both our water quality folks uh that do permitting as well as. I'll reach out to um Division of Forestry and um just see what the. Sorry, no pun intended, landscape looks like in this area um on the Nevada side. Um, yeah, I would also echo what Ben is is observed um with regard to. Um, development and construction stormwater issues, um, not necessarily in the Tahoe Basin, but. Certainly in other areas that are developing in in Nevada, we're also seeing um a lot of contractors coming in from out of state. Um, at, we've actually had them say, oh, yeah, we didn't think Nevada had any environmental laws. So it's been challenging to see the um, the post-COVID uh growth of. And development and contractors and everything going on. So um, it's it's been a challenge for us as well and and um. So, yeah, we're we're putting more resources in that area for construction inspections too. So it's a thing.
Good. Thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, we are likewise holding our contractors accountable on the E I P projects and it it's very challenging. Um, how about Ms. Chandler?
Okay, the only thing I have to report is if you remember last October, we were talking about aquatic invasive species. And we sent it back to committee for that committee to come forth with a a different proposal or a refined. Uh, proposal and uh we'll we'll be meeting at two o'clock today finally. And hopefully we'll have a recommendation to you by the next meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Susan. Hitchcock.
Well, nothing to report.
Thanks, John. Mr. Young? You are muted.
Nothing today, but thank you for a good meeting.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Uh, just a quick update from me. Eldorado County has embarked or is beginning. Um, jurisdiction-wide area planning process. So it's it's due time that we. Uh, bring the rest of our county outside of Myers into current standards. And the effort is called the Tahoe Eldorado Area Plan. So we have a long way to go. But we're underway with a consultant and we're really excited to be working on that. So. Um, thank you all. Let's go on to item eight, which are closing public interest comments. If any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission, please either come to the podium. Or raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your telephone. Um. Again, written comments may be submitted via email to publiccomment@trpa.gov. Please include the meeting information and agenda item in your subject line. Also, please note that A P C is prohibited by law. From taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public that are not listed on our agenda. So we'll go to the room first and we have Ms. Waller.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Ellie Waller. I want to thank you, uh, Mr. Drew, for the B M Ps in general. T R P A used to use a percentage to uh as a completion, as a benchmark for residential allocations. They don't do that anymore. Just saying. Uh, local jurisdictions that have county-owned properties. Should be completing B M Ps on redevelopment sites, whether. Um, or not, my opinion, um, a project is in the works or not, if it can't, if it. Or if a developer like the case of thirty-nine North in Placer County just got another two-year extension. The very least, they could do some. The very least, they could do some BMPs to help the system. Uh, recently, we're seeing more and more information about taxing vacant homes emerging. And with that said, again, I've brought up uh major employers don't do their fair share. Um, and some of this has to work out. I don't know how it is at the local jurisdiction levels. Thank you, Chief. I've seen the perimeter demo. Um, it's a very useful tool. Um, I have Douglas County uh coming to my uh Property Owners Association to give a demo as well. Um, with that said, there were some questions from my POA um about when there's power outages and phone lines down, uh, how is that gonna be a useful tool? Um, other than that, it's a great tool. I've seen it. Um, I think everybody should request looking at that demo. Um, and it's portable. You can have it seen. Um, and then I just want to reiterate that I I still have a disappointment in the uh South Shore Latitude Thirty-nine Project only being an environmental assessment. I think the project size in itself could have triggered uh some kind of uh EIR and um I think some of the analysis was rushed. It was brought up that the VMT, which is very visible today was uh at twelve ninety-eight with a thirteen hundred trigger and several of the governing board members um asked for that to be reevaluated and it was not. And now that project, project's entitled and uh for sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. No other commenters in the room? How about online, Catherine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three hands raised so far. The first hand up was Doug Flaherty. Doug, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you, Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org, members of the commission. Uh, first off, I want to comment on Mr. Marshall's um labeling the MAP um lawsuit as a tragedy. I don't know if that's his role. He should be um explaining maybe what the lawsuit is, but to editorialize in this manner. Yeah, reflects everything that's wrong about the TRPA uh and its continued mismanagement of the Lake Tahoe Basin. Uh, also in connection with that, I can't speak for MAP, but I am sure there's a lot of members of MAP that are in the Lake Tahoe Basin. Uh, even though MAP may have not have ventured into the basin before on these types of issues as far as lawsuit. Um, secondly, uh, kudos to Chief Lundgren. Everyone would support any attempt uh on the Basin Fire Chiefs Association to assist any way they can on wildfire evacuation planning. Uh, the fact that they're just now doing it, um, and it raises some questions. Where's the leadership been to this point? However, what I didn't hear, I didn't hear anything about roadway by roadway capacity evaluation. Um, I didn't hear anything about the best practices of the California Attorney General. Um, I am sure that all of those items will be part of this new and revised um unity plan. If it's not, then um, you know, basically we go back to the same issue. I- it's about identifying the roadway capacity uh in the Lake Tahoe Basin in case of a wildfire to help us decide whether or not increased density uh coverage and height is appropriate. And also I want to comment on the BMT issue, BMP issue. We've had a mismanagement of the uh US Forest Service. Um and you know, I guess that includes the Tahoe Fires and Fuels Team. They've got seven hundred and fifty thousand burn piles out there. I don't think the indigenous people uh went out and chopped up uh timber and you know, cleared the forest and 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 put five hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty thousand burn piles in our forest and our basin and use thousands of gallons of uh petroleum product to burn them, including disrupting wildlife. Um, what about the runoff uh from that when it snows? Seven hundred and fifty thousand burn piles. They haven't been monitored. Nobody's overseeing them, just like nobody's overseeing the TRPA. Uh, and speaking of a monitoring, I hope that the TRPA calls for account of east shore users, east shore trail users. Um, that pro- that project was approved. We've been hit with a tremendous amount of 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 visitor traffic, highly impactful, and nobody's taking account of visitors. And that's a shame that we need to monitor that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doug.
The next hand raised is Niobe Burden. Niobe, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hello again, this is Niobe Burden of Talvista. Um, I just wanted to point out in the vein of improving trust and transparency and the judgment of height for the public. I suggest, and I have suggested since June of this past year, the uh utilization of story polls. This is a a standard that is used worldwide in many resort communities. Um, and I saw it in Europe when I lived there for the past ten years. And I believe it's a great way for the public to be able to see exactly what height is. And so I suggest a discussion about utilization, um possibly mandating of story polls on all proposed lakeside projects. There is no better way to judge acceptable height. Um, a height of fifty-six feet on lakeside projects is misunderstood until fully visualized. There have been older standards of forty-six feet, I believe. And so we really need to be looking at that and making sure the public understands uh how these projects can affect views. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Niobe.
The last hand raised is Ann Nichols. Ann, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Yes, uh, thank you so much. Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. You know what the real tragedy is? Is that all the bad policy of TRPA is what has caused the lack of affordable housing, the uh runaway luxury condos, the special interests gaining in sway and importance. And all the the monetizing of entitlements has created land to be more valuable. They have to pay more money. They, the set projects, let's approve really huge projects that can't even be financed. They never happen. Nothing ever goes. And then you blame it all on the uh NIMBYs when it's really the TRPA. But you won't, and has APC ever denied or recommended not approving a project? I can't remember when that's ever happened. But the discussion today was really good. I hope this kind of skepticism or request for information will continue. You know, what are we gonna do? If if TRPA fails totally, which, you know, being in, being a PR organization, which they are now, I don't see a lot of forward thinking. The road I live on, I've been here fifty-five years. It isn't even paved. Placer County, thank you. So, you know, let's look and TRPA enforcement doesn't happen. Call Steve Sweet. He's too busy. There's one guy, maybe two. Yeah, so anyway. There is a real, it's a real problem with a lack of accountability and transparency by the agency in charge. Thank you for the record, by the way.
Thank you, Ann.
There are no other hands raised to comment.
Okay, Catherine, thanks. We'll go ahead and close that public comment. And take us to item nine, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Thank you, Jason. All those in favor, please say aye. I don't think we have any opposed. That motion carries and we'll stand adjourned at twelve thirty-four. Thank you all so much. Have a good rest of the day.